That's easy.
That's romantic, isn't it?
Yeah, that's easy to remember, too.
That's right.
Hey, Jack. I took page to the trots and rule of trots.
All right, it is nine o'clock. And I will call this Boyle County Fiscal Court meeting to order, October 28th, 9:00 a.m. Madam Clerk, has this, do we have a form, and has it been properly advertised?
Yes.
All right, good deal, we are ready to rock and roll. First item of business will be our invocation by Magistrate Harmon.
Let us pray. Father, we thank you today for this day. We thank you for the rain that we've gotten. And Lord, we pray for those that are down in Dominican, Jamaica, and all those places where hurricanes hitting right now. We pray for their safety, that you watch over them. Father, we thank you for the time we can meet at the fiscal court and take care of the things in our community and county. And Lord, that what we do, let it be your glory and your honor. Forgive us our sin. We ask all this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Master Harmon. And if I could ask you all to please silence your cellphones, either turn them off or put them on silent, or something like that, so we don't have that noise during the meeting. Okay, next up is our pledge of allegiance, and we have a special guest with us today, Gabriel Dennis. Gabriel is a fifth grader at Junction City School, and he is going to come up and lead us in the pledge if you all will stand.
The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Gabriel, good job. I've got a certificate for you. This is in recognition of you leading the pledge of allegiance to the Boyle County Fiscal Court, so thank you very much. If you'll hold that sign, and if you'll look at the phone right there, we'll take a picture together.
Great job.
All right, you have a good day at school. You can stay and be entertained, or you can go back to school alone. Hold it. Who do you have with you? Who do you have with you today? Your mom, what's her name? Laura? Okay, well, thank you so much for bringing me here.
Yeah. Thank you. Have a good day.
Have a good day.
Good job, man.
All right, we have prior meeting minutes.
I'm going to approve the minutes as presented. A second.
Okay, those are the October 14th minutes. We have a motion by Magistrate Gay, a second by Magistrate Sleeper. Any discussion on the minutes? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify the saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Motion carries. Minutes are approved. And thank you, Magistrate Ellis, for filling in last meeting. Appreciate you doing that, and you'll be, have the honor of signing those minutes. All right, budget transfers.
I have budget transfers in the amount of $11,912.35.
Okay, your motion to approve?
Make a motion, we approve the transfers as presented.
Magistrate Sleeper, second.
Second.
Magistrate Bodner, any discussion? All those in favor, signify the saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Motion carries. Cash transfers?
Cash transfers, $500,000 from the interest-bearing account to the general fund. $150,000 from the general fund to the jail, and $150,000 from the general fund to EMS.
Okay, motion to approve?
Make a motion, we approve the cash transfers as presented.
Magistrate Bodner, is there a second?
Second.
Magistrate Gay, any discussion? Okay, all those in favor, signify the saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Motion carries. And now we will approve our bills.
Good morning.
Good morning.
All right, your all's bill packet this meeting is on a total of $103,846.36. I'm adding on Larry's bill, the janitorial maintenance bill, that was almost really bad. If I'd forgot that, I'd have never lived to do it. It's $5,333.33, and that is going to bring the grand total to $109,175.69.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the bills?
Motion.
Magistrate Harmon, is there a second?
Second.
Magistrate Ellis, any discussion on the bills?
I'm looking about two inches down, and so that the public understands, with all the historic buildings on Constitution Square, what was the bid we got for the glass restoration? And I'm looking at a tiny percentage of that.
You mean the windows?
The windows, yes.
$220-some-thousand.
Thousands, yeah.
And because we have inmates learning a trade that is highly in demand, and when they come out from their incarceration, they will be able to be employed anywhere where restorations are going.
Sure.
And we're doing this for a few thousand dollars.
Probably most than $5,000, I would guess.
Oh, I would like, yeah.
I think that's worth noting.
That's awesome. Very much. Thank you. All right, any other comments on the bills? Motion to approve? Oh, I'm sorry. Come on, prove it and do it all over again. All right, all those in favor, affirm the bills as presented. Signify the saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Motion carries.
Thank you again.
You did that for my account, Judge, because I was flubbing up, you know, royalty last meeting.
That's all right. Okay, next, we have a proclamation for Mind and Memory Care Awareness Week, and we have some guests in the audience here. Do you all want to come up as I read the proclamation, and then I can present it to And I'm going to let you all introduce yourselves and tell who you're from and how this relates to you all.
I'm Carrie Wasso, and from Parkview Assistant Living. And I think this is a great opportunity to bring awareness to the people of our community that we serve.
Mm-hmm, okay. Next.
I am Tabitha T. Currently, I work for Centerwell Home Health, but my previous life was with Morning Point Senior Living, which, you know, was our memory care. And so during that time, I got really, really close and just had a different awareness to the journey of dementia, Alzheimer's, if you will. And it just, my heart, it just, it pulled at my heartstrings just to see how uneducated that we are, you know, that we really do not understand the disease, just as a general public. So I'm really, really proud of our city, you know, David was always been the city of first. And so, like, to get to be here today, for us to be able to do this, I just think that it's another one of those things that sets our small town apart, that says, hey, you know, we want to stand out, and we want to recognize the village that's on this journey.
I'm Sid Wolfcott. I work at the Boyle County Performing Arts Center. And next Tuesday, we're bringing in a show called Remember Balloons, which is about Boyle and his grandfather, and...
About the post.
And the balloons represent the grandfather's memories that are starting to kind of float away.
And that's November 4th.
November 4th, at 6:30.
Okay. Anybody would like to attend that? Yeah. All right.
I'm Jessica Riley. I'm community coordinator at McDowell Place of Danville. And we just opened our memory care unit about three years ago. And so this means a lot to our community and our residents, to just have something that is for them, and they can grow more out in the community as well.
And I'm Mandy, with H. Well Senior Services. I own and have served seniors in the area for 25-plus years. I've been saying 25 years for several years. Plus, plus, plus. But yeah, I have a very soft spot in my heart for those living with dementia. Provide a new free event every month in partnership with the arts center. It's called Memory Cafe. So it's for those living with dementia and their caregivers, just providing that safe space. Also work with Gina Scott at McDowell Place to provide the Alzheimer's Association Support Group. So, yeah, just getting awareness to those programs is very important, too.
Awesome. Somebody's hiding back there.
I'm Abby Dobson. I'm also with Parkview. My parents purchased Parkview three years ago. So it has, as Tabitha said, been very eye-opening to see how little we know about dementia, so.
Yeah. Well, it's very encouraging to have you all here today and to see all the different departments that, you know, people can go to when they have a need. And for someone that has to care for a patient with memory loss and dementia, and, you know, the struggles that they face and the things that go on with that disease, it's just, sometimes it's just more than people can take. So it's good that we have all these resources available that they can reach out to. So thank you all, and it's going to be my privilege to read this proclamation. Proclamation for Mind and Memory Care Awareness Week, whereas dementia and Alzheimer's disease affects thousands of individuals and families in our community, touching lives across all generations. Whereas October is recognized nationally as Dementia Awareness Month, fostering understanding and support for those living with dementia, and November is recognized as Alzheimer's Awareness Month, emphasizing education, research, and caregiving resources. And whereas our community values the importance of memory, care, and intergenerational connection, encouraging meaningful conversations about cognitive health among youth, families, and neighbors. And whereas the week of Tuesday, October 28th, through Tuesday, November 4th, is dedicated to engaging the community in reflection and awareness, culminating in the performance of the Remember Balloons at the B.C. PAC on Tuesday, November 4th, at 6:30, along with a series of school and community programs. Now, therefore, I, Trilly L. Bottom, Boyle County Judge Executive, and the Boyle County Fiscal Court do hereby proclaim Mind and Memory Care Awareness Week in Boyle County, and urge all citizens to participate in programs and events that promote memory, awareness, understanding, and care. This day, October 28th, 2025. And can I get a motion to approve the proclamation?
Make a motion.
Second.
Magistrate Bodner, second by Magistrate Gay. All those in favor, signify the saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Motion carries. All right.
Judge, if I could...
Yes, please.
As the son, grandson, and nephew of some people that have suffered and died from Alzheimer's, I thank you all for the work you do. And I do want to say, you know, my mom, my grandmother, and my aunt all died having been lost earlier to Alzheimer's, because I kind of, I believe that, you know, it's one of those diseases that unfortunately you lose people twice with Alzheimer's, because my mom lived for seven years without really knowing who any of us were. And so I'm so appreciative for those caregivers and families, and understand the families and the challenge and suffering that there is with suffering from Alzheimer's. So you do, you know, lose your loved one twice with that terrible disease of Alzheimer's and dementia. I'm thankful that we have the caregivers in our community, and I'm thankful that the University of Kentucky is one of the leading research institutions looking for cures, so and understanding of this terrible, terrible disease.
Thank you, Magistrate Gay.
And I'll mention, my grandfather had it for 13 years, and my mother, my sister, they cared for him for all those years. And what they went through, now there's so many more resources. It's such a better thing. We understand it better, not well, but still better. So it's a great improvement from back years ago, so I appreciate all your efforts.
Anybody else? All right. Okay, so I don't know who wants the actual proclamation.
I'll be Mandy.
Mandy, okay, all right. And would you like to hold the poster?
Sure.
All right. You can represent B.C. PAC, all right? We'll just all kind of gather around here, and don't you be hiding back there.
Ready? One, two, three. There we go. Great. Thank you. See you on our Facebook page. Good work coming. Appreciate it. Love you. And thank you so much. Yeah, thanks for being here. Thanks for being here. You all have a great day.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, good work that they do. Okay, next, we have Jack Hendricks, and he has brought some people with him, Donnie Knatsir and Tony Cromwell. All right, and think he's got something to present? Maybe.
Well, maybe, maybe. For those who don't recognize me, I'm Jack Hendricks. First time I haven't been up here without my specs on. You look younger than me now. How about that? I wish. Anyway, I'm here representing the American Legion Post 46 and VFW Post 3634. We have both of our commanders, as well as a VFW Quartermaster here. His job's one of the toughest jobs in the business. But we got Tony Cromwell, he's Post Commander of American Legion Post 46, and Donnie Knatsir is Commander of VFW Post 3634. And first of all, on behalf of all the veterans in Boyle County, I want to thank this court, and especially Judge Bottom, for everything you guys do to back anything the veterans need here. It's very refreshing, we never have to worry about where everybody's at in our city-county government. So thank you all for that. One of the things we're here for mainly, and Donnie and Tony, if you guys want to come on up, is as you're passing around the pictures of before and after, just as a reminder of our killed-in-action memorial out front, that memorial has 77 names on it, for those who are not sure. Those people gave all for this country, serving the country. And Judge Bottom brought it to my attention, as I'm sure she did to the rest of the magistrates. So I decided at that point, I told Judge Bottom that we've got to include our veterans in doing something about that memorial. It was, as you can see in the pictures, it was a mess. Not anyone's fault, it just needed a little facelift after 25 years or so of being there. But those 77 names represent what those men gave, they gave all for this country. So that memorial, above anything, should always be number one in our hearts, taken care of. So when I mentioned it to these two fellows, are both our commanders, they jumped on board pretty doggone quick. I mean, it was, I didn't have to do no selling at all, absolutely. They came up, they looked, they said, yeah, we want to help. So that's what they're here for today, is to show the veterans appreciation for your all's involvement in keeping the veterans on the forefront of what's going on. We've got our 250th coming up, and I'm on the parade committee, and we're having a military appreciation part of the parade and so forth. And I told the committee members, we wouldn't be having this 250th if it wasn't for our veterans. They're the ones, and those 77 out front, they put it on the line for our country. So that's what we're all about. I'm proud to say, these two posts, these two commanders have done tremendous work in bringing forward community involvement, things to help the community, help our veterans. They've probably done more in their last two or three years in these posts than probably any other person around for many, many years. So I want to thank them, too. Tony?
Good morning.
Good morning.
On behalf of Post 46 and its members, we want to thank you for the opportunity to help support the refurbishment of the memorial out front there. It's a grand opportunity for us to represent, you know, and advance that interest in making it look beautiful out there. We're just looking at it, and it was a well-done job. Compliment the county on the quality of the work that was done. So Donnie and I are, the posts are splitting expense, and I'll present that to you here in a minute, but you might also be comforted to note that we work for the current veterans also. About a month ago, 107 years ago, 15 Boyle County World War I veterans signed the charter for the American Legion. And we've had that post out north of town, just over the hill, since that time. Now, our service officer is fully accredited with the VA, and he's in charge of basically central Kentucky. And since the first of the year, I've asked him, and he's, he currently represents 315 veterans, and he's added 208 more this year. And that's, these folks are getting benefits that they've earned. What's really important and changes their lives is that when one of these veterans passes on, does the spouse get the benefits they should be getting? That's a really important question. And often it's not, that's not the case, and we take the necessary paperwork to make that happen. But we've held 220 appointments at the post with veterans out there. He's interacted with 1,452 veterans this year so far, so we're working with those. Also, according to kind of community actions, we learned that the Bergen High School baseball team, Bulldogs, very, very poorly funded, very dejected group of boys. So we decided to fully fund them. And now they have baseballs, they have bats, they have a spirit, have given the guidance to follow their grandparents and their parents' example, the Legion and those Legion values. And they turned around and started winning games. We made a difference.
Yeah.
We made a difference. They, also, we have the tornado in Amityown South, and we helped rebuild a community center that they needed help rebuilding. One of the, our primary donations really revolve in the veterans area, Thompson Hood, Heritage Hospice, Lady Vet Direct, which is for lady veterans trying to get into homes and stuff, Salvation Army, God's pantry, those are the places that we've been, we're in our funds. And we've been very successful with our charitable gaming, and it allows us to do that work, so. That's what's happening out there. We're kind of quiet and shy, and we want to thank Jack, even he does represent you guys well. He's a real catalyst in the veteran community, in bringing your interest, the veteran interest to bear. And we thank him and all of you together. With that, I have a check to present to you, Judge, for our half of the rebuilding. And we have a certificate here. And that is that.
Thank you very much, thank you.
Emotional.
Appreciate that. So a little background history, when I became judge, there was lots of, you know, projects that I was trying to get down on paper, things that needed to be done. One of them was the Veterans Memorial out front. And so it's taken two and a half years to get there, but it started out, it's just, like you say, a nice, quiet little project that we were going to just spruce it up and make it look nice, you know, and be respectful to the veterans that the names are on that monument out there. Just make it look more respectful for them and their families that visit. But Jack got wind of it. And when Jack got wind of it, it blossomed into a more beautiful, a beautiful thing. And we are going to have the Hall of Fame Monument brought in, and that's what we'll be doing after our November 10th meeting.
Okay.
We'll be having that monument and have a little presentation out there to welcome that to the already beautiful monuments that are out there, and pay respect to our Hall Famers that way. So, but thank you very much, we appreciate this, and I just, it warms my heart.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Judge, I have your picture with all these guys in that. We'll get that to you next time.
Okay, I think you've got a presentation.
Donnie, we got rather a good. We're not going to leave out the VFW.
Oh, no, no. So some of you may know me, some, a lot of you probably don't. Ms. Bodner, you were actually my school nurse.
I knew that, I knew that when I saw you.
So my name's Donnie Knatsir. I've been the Post Commander at VFW Post 3634 since July of 2023. So I know decades ago, the VFW has a whole kind of developed reputation of being a smoke-filled bar, just a, you know, it's a place where veterans went to escape their regular lives. So over the course of the last two years, we've tried writing that ship and getting us back out in the community, back in the schools, back involved with elected officials. So over the last 27 months, the VFW here in Danville, along with has donated over 3,000 hours of community service. We've had cash donations, which as Tony said, our charitable gaming has really helped on that funding, so we put over $200,000 back into the community since July of 2023.
That's incredible.
And it's still going. We're already, we're three months into the fiscal year, and we're already at $45,000 in donations.
Wow.
So I want to thank you all, I want to thank Jack for being the bridge between you all and us. And I've drove by there a thousand times, I've looked at the monument, I've been stopped, I've got pictures of it. But it's just like any project, sometimes it just needs a toll of innovation, and I think it turned out amazing. And I do, I want to appreciate Trilly for kind of spearheading it, Jack for coordinating everything. And like I said, it took a few phone calls. Jack called me, I stopped, looked at it, I was sold on it, I was already on board. And it just, it took a phone call. I put it out to the membership, and they're like, yeah, whatever they need, we can do it. So we do have a check for our split of it. I've also got some appreciation certificates here from the VFW. I don't remember exactly what I wrote in the letter. Ms. White, Ms. Green, I'm sorry I didn't see you on the roster, so I will get yours back up here tomorrow morning. We do have another certificate here to present to the fiscal court as a whole, but I wanted to do individual awards for you all, too, because without you all, you all are our representation in the court. So I want to say thank you. We've got another certificate here.
These are very nice, and we really appreciate it.
Yes, ma'am. And here's a check for $3,750.
Wow, wow, that's just incredible. Thank you all so much.
That's nice, thank you.
Yeah, so it went from being a, just a quiet little project that we were going to spruce up and give the monument out there a little facelift, and it's turned into this, and we are so appreciative, and just love being partners with you all. We support our veterans, and we want you to know how important you all are, because like Jack said, if it wasn't for people like you all, we would not be standing here today. So we appreciate all the sacrifices that you all have made.
Absolutely.
All right.
One of our things, too, is we want to thank the road department. They got on board and helped out...
Yes, public works.
...considerably, and Mark and Roger did a fantastic job out there, as witnessed by what you see. It's a totally different picture out there now. And they really did a fantastic job. Now, this is Ken Portwood, I forgot to mention, he's our Quartermaster, he writes those checks, so you need to get on him. He's the one that takes care of all of our finances at the VFW, and believe me, it's a tough, tough job, but he does it very, very well. Thank you, Ken.
Thank you all very much. Katanah, I think it's going, oh, Julie's back, okay. We just come over here in front of the podium, I'll stand in the middle, and you want to be two of you on each side, and, um, let's see. Why don't you hold that one? Oh.
Me. Let me hold the check.
Let me, why don't you hold the check? Let me hold the check.
There you go.
You hold the money.
You don't want that check getting out of you.
One, two, three, smile pretty, there we go. Thank you. Oh, this is so awesome. Thank you, guys. Appreciate your service. Appreciate you. Jack, thank you.
You're very welcome.
Appreciate you.
Anytime, you know that, anytime.
Thank you for your service.
And, and back to the one.
Yeah, we got some magistrate's that might want to say something.
Yeah, and thank you all so much for this, and, and as I think Jack knows this, it's kind of, I know it seems like it's Family Issue Day for me today, but as my grandfather, Harold Woodrow Craig, I always like to give him a shout out when I get the opportunity, from Montgomery County, so not from Boyle County, was killed in action on November 29, 1944.
Oh, wow.
And so I've always felt like I needed to earn that. And I have a veteran son, and I think he's always felt the same way too. And so it was a grandfather that I never knew since I was born in 1961, but my mom that I mentioned earlier, she was six years old when she lost her father. So, thank you all.
We have a son squad around here that's about third the largest in the state of Kentucky, over 70 sons in there, and feel us just as you do.
Yeah. That's why these type memorials to us are very, very important, and this court for years, going back to 2001, has always supported our Veterans of All of Honor out at the Oboe Volcanic Fairgrounds, that type of thing. And this, to me, out front, is one of the most important ones we got, because those are the real heroes of the world, all this TV crap and all that compared to what they did. So I had a cousin that's on that out there too. He was killed at Normandy about a week after D-Day, so he was one of those guys that was clearing the hedgerows you see in the movies and so forth in Germany, and his squad got cut down in open field, they had machine guns set up, so, yeah. And there's other families here in Boyle County that's very appreciative of that out there. They came to a couple of memorial services we've had, and especially the six Vietnam veterans. I grew up with most of those out west then, so those, those families are all still here, and they do come around every now and then. Again, thanks a bunch. We appreciate it.
If you gentlemen have not been on the honor flight ago, I was very fortunate, a dozen years ago, my father was a bombardier, B-24 in the Pacific, and not only were we able to get him on the honor flight, but they would always send one person, healthy and young at that time, with every three veterans, and I got to go with him. And when he came home, he told my sister that it was the best day of his life, being on the honor flight. So please, your family members should get in touch with folks who organize that. The gentleman back then was in Lexington, and it's something you won't forget, because we do want to honor all of you.
I went on the honor flight with my dad also, and I think that was a memory that I'll never forget. I think I went probably September, October, he died in January, so that was like one of the last, you know, real special memories I have with my dad, experiencing that together. He had dementia, and I didn't even know if he really understood what was going on, because I mean, I had to like be there with him every second, but when we landed and was going through the airport, pushing him through, and everybody's like, "Welcome home, soldier," and all that. I mean, I couldn't see him because I'm pushing him, but you know, I parked the wheelchair, and I said, "Hey, I want to go get the car." And then I looked at my dad, and he's just like, tears. So he really did understand what was going on, and he's like, "Give me a tissue."
You're not alone, Jamie. You've got, you've got a partner over here.
That was great. So we should honor our veterans.
That's absolutely, absolutely.
Don't forget November 7th. Hope to see you all out there in Murray.
Yeah.
11 o'clock.
November 11.
No, 7.
Yeah, 7.
I'm sorry. The reason we not having it on Veterans Day again is because of the fact so many events are going on on Veterans Day, that it's hard to get the school kids, the participation, the volunteers, it's just almost difficult, almost impossible, because we got Camp Nelson and everything going on there, so that's why we're having it on Friday the 7th, to honor our veterans, and we expect eight, nine hundred this year is what we expect.
Makes sense.
I hope there's a thousand.
Makes sense.
It's a busy day. Come on out.
Veterans Day is the 11th.
Yeah.
I know you're going to miss it for the first time in 15 years.
My oldest grandson's birthday's on November 11th, so see, now I only got to honor all the veterans, but I get to honor my grandson too.
There you go. Good deal. And November the 10th, don't forget out front, I'm sure Judge is going to remind everybody of that. I don't think he'd remind you. Thank you all.
Thank you all. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Ken. Appreciate you.
Appreciate it.
Anything we can ever do, or you got news for us? Thanks, Ken.
Don't forget your jacket.
Better not, it's a little chilly out. See, sir.
Yeah, and so while they're coming in, I do want to just say that Public Works did have a big part in the facelift out there to the concrete area, the concrete area and getting all the landscaping done and everything, so we'll be dealt with that. Please, concrete did the stamping, concrete, so.
Looked good, really good.
Next up is Brent Blemmert.
I always appreciate the minutes to talk with you guys, and I always appreciate your support through the years and what we're doing. Just a couple of things today, wanted to give you all a little info on something really exciting that's happened with us, a little background before it. When we started Harm Reduction in 2016, you know, it was a pretty basic thing that we were looking at, and we tried to grow that over the years to be more of an inclusive so that people come in, it's not just that, when we were looking at needles, but now we're trying to do as many services as we can, and it's grown a lot, our program's grown a lot. We've added Bryce, who you all know, we'll talk about what Bryce is doing here in a second, but something really cool happened, we got word last week, about a month ago, we applied for a $166,000 grant. It's opioid money, they came to the Health Department Association, and sure enough, we were one of three counties that got it. And really excited about that, and what it allows us to do is have what's called an RCC, a Recovery Community Center. And what it's really based on is what we were just talking about, when somebody comes in, try not to have to send them to a lot of different places around town, and it might just be that we can refer or whatever, but it gives us more of that ability to do that, including finding the space that we can have our Harm Reduction Team and Bryce, because right now they're in separate places, separate buildings, but to get that all in one place, to have it in the community, so that people in the community know when they come in, that's what's going on in there. And hopefully to make that an inviting, somewhat comfortable place for people to come in and know that they're going to see a familiar face, we're not judging them, but we're trying to help them. And so real excited about that. So as part of that, a while back, the Board of Health, we were talking about homeless, and obviously there's a lot of things going on with that in the community, and I'll tell you right up front, we're not building a shelter, we're not running a shelter, that's the one question I get with it, so we're not doing that. But the Board of Health did agree to allow us to fund a position to work with the Homeless Coalition, which is led by Dr. Ray Tier, and also our Harm Reduction Program, because what we found out was, we had almost 2,000 visits in the last year, and about 40% of those weren't just coming in exchanging clean needles, they were coming in for other reasons. A lot of those reasons are food, water, literally sometimes people just need to come in and sit down with somebody who's going to talk to them for a minute, and that's, that's fine, that's part of it. So when we were looking at that, we also had a lot of people coming in that just don't have a place to stay, for whatever reason, ton of reasons for that, and so when we added that position, we were looking around, and I'm glad we have Bryce, super glad we have Bryce. One of the key things I wanted, when we were looking for that, was I wanted somebody with passion that really, for whatever reason, had their own reasons and their own passion for wanting to be and helping that homeless world, and we've got that Bryce. So really just wanted to give you all that info. That's a really cool thing. Now, it's good, this isn't an instant thing, it's going to take us a little while, and we'll come back when we get our feet under us several months down the road and give you an update on what that looks like. But if you hear anything in the community, that's what it is, it's called an RCC. So, Bryce, take a few minutes, tell what you're doing.
All right. Thanks, Brent. Thank y'all for having us. So the main reason why I, or not the main reason, but what got me so passionate about working with homeless people is because of Diane and Carol, which y'all have all met before. You know, when I was working for the Shepherd's House, she was one of our clients, and she couldn't stay sober. And so I got to where I was doing outreach with her son, taking her food and just, you know, going to check on her and things like that. So what I learned through all of that, through getting her in stable housing, and she actually is in a one-bedroom apartment today, which is amazing. But we got to come together as a community, and we have to have all these resources, and we have to be able to, to be able to tell them, you know, you can go here and do this, but one of the most important things is to just meet them where they're at. So I've been doing a lot of outreach, I've just been going out and talking to them, just kind of building rapport, trying to build some trust and relationships with them, because I, we're very early on this, you know, in this deal here, I think like 60 days or something, you know, like pretty close to it, so it'll develop, and it, it'll become, I think, something that's really useful in our community. But it doesn't, we're not going to solve it, we're not going to solve it at the Health Department, but as a community, I think that we can come together and help. We've got food that's being donated every month, and we're taking it out. Food insecurity is going to be probably a really, really big thing, you know, without SNAP benefits, and, and here's the other thing, you know, most of us, when we think of somebody who's homeless, is we think of somebody who's in active addiction, which they may be, somebody that's suffering from semi-severable illness. But just like yesterday afternoon, I get a phone call, and it's a woman and a 15-year-old, and they run out of money. I think they get disability. But my point is, is that it's not just somebody who's in active addiction or, you know, severe general illness. Our, our community's going to be affected even more, because what's going to happen is our families are going to start having to decide if they're going to pay their rent or if they're going to buy food, and things like that. So anyways, I'm really, really grateful to be able to help our community today. But it takes all of us, it's not just, it takes everybody. And anyways, that's all I really got. Thank y'all.
So if the court remembers back about a year ago, when we established the committee, Magistrate Sleeper was the homeless committee that he was on, the court at that time recognized and mentioned that we needed a homeless coordinator. Wasn't sure at the time how to get that done, you know, and how to go about that, but we are thankful that you are here and that we now have a homeless coordinator. So thank you for the work that you're doing, and let us know if we can be of assistance.
Bless you.
Bless you.
And I wanted to mention that it's not a drug addiction, it's not a one thing's going to cure everything. It has to be a whole community, like the Health Department, and the resources the churches have, and there's all these different organizations, and it's all coming together to meet them, and that, that's what's going to make a difference and turn it out, I think.
Absolutely, absolutely. And one other thing that you throw in, the vouchers that we were doing for the hotel last year.
Yes.
And I think I told you all earlier, you know, that was a two-year thing, we ran out of money, the Hudson Ellis Grant came up with, and correct me if I'm wrong, 17,000?
Yep, 17,500.
So it's 200 and...
250 rooms and nights, basically, but you know.
Wonderful.
And it'll be, we haven't set all the criteria yet to it, but that's half of what we had, so we're currently through the Homeless Coalition trying to raise the other half. You know, it's just, it's just a Band-Aid on a bullet wound, really, but it's what we got, and we'll do it to the best of our ability. There'll be different factors, like there'll be weather activators and things like that that'll, that will actually activate the vouchers, just because it's, it's just, it's just kind of how it's got to be. I wish we could give them out here around, but you know, we can't do that, so we'll figure it out.
Yeah, at least in the summer, it can be hot, you know, it's, winter, it's pretty brutal out there sometimes, so.
Magistrate Bodner mentioned the churches, and I know it would be all-consuming for you to try to get around to every one of them, but if you would like to contact me and I'll give you my card, I could arrange for a session perhaps with one of our pastors at Centenary, just so that you'll be familiar with what we can do, and we'll know exactly what you're doing.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Well, I have no doubt that you'll be successful in this, Bryce, you were successful with the Shepherd's House, and you've got it to the point it is today, and so I know in this new role, you're going to be just as wonderful and do what it takes to help those in need.
Thank you, I really appreciate that.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Brent. Y'all have a great day. All right, next up, Charles Morgan with our insurance for those. Awesome.
Morning, Judge.
Morning.
Morning, Magistrates.
Morning.
I am Lisa Sam, I'm staff attorney with Sharon Morgan, and I also have Michelle Midnor today, she's our staff CPA, and we are the consultants to help the county with the employee benefits programs. And I'm here this morning with a brief update on how the health plan is run this year, and also, we're going to make some renewal recommendations. In general, the health plan has performed very well this year, and we are projecting that your costs on a per employee basis will actually be 6% lower than they were last year.
Yay.
And your six-year trend has been 4%. So your health plan costs have inflated on average at a rate of 4% per year over the last six years, and that is well below national trend. National trend is 7% to 9%, and it's pushing toward the higher end of that. So you, you're definitely beating trend, and your costs are below both state and national benchmarks. So excellent job on that. As far as renewal recommendations go, first, the administrative renewal from Point C, that company used to be called Aspirant, they bring you the Anthem Network that you use for your providers and your hospitals, and they are proposing a 2% increase to their fees, that's $1.50 per employee per month, that equates to about $2,600 for the whole year. So we are recommending that you renew with Point C and Anthem for the medical administration. On the pharmacy side, you use a company called Medben, and they also use a company called Ventegra to administer your pharmacy plan, and they are holding their fees for 2026. We are recommending that you make one change to the pharmacy program, and that is to move your specialty drug outsourcing from RX Help Centers to a program called the Benefit Preservation Program, and that's actually run by Mednet. So they do the same thing that RX Help Centers has done for the last few years, which is, whenever possible, find an alternative source that will pay for the specialty drugs. Specialty drugs are really expensive medications that are used for various health conditions. And the reason we're making that recommendation is that there will be some additional savings that the BPP program can achieve, and also their fees are slightly lower, but primarily the experience for your members will be smoother, because it's all under one roof with Medben, instead of being a separate company from Medben where we have to do some interfacing. Medben where we have to do some interfacing. So we're recommending that you transition that piece of the pharmacy administration for 2026. So that's the administrative renewal. And then on stop loss, you're currently with a stop loss carrier called Symetra. And their renewal was actually an increase of 32%, which was $118,000.
Was that based on actuarial data of ours or overall?
Both.
Both.
But Cheryl Morgan did obtain some alternative stop loss quotes. We went to 12 different carriers and received proposals from three additional carriers. And we actually got a quote from a company called 180. And they use Gerber Life Insurance Company for their, for the stop loss policy itself. And the premiums with 180 Gerber are actually 10.3% below current. So that's $38,000 less than you paid in 2025 and $155,000 lower than the Symetra renewal. And all of the terms of your stop loss policy would stay the same. Gerber is rated A+ by A&amp;Best. And so we are recommending that you move your stop loss from Symetra to 180 Gerber.
While we're on that point, Judge, do we need to stop at certain points and make a vote on recommendations or overall? Because it could get confusing if there are several.
I would just add that the Finance Committee met, which I was going to report on later, but I can do part, most of the report here now, is that the Finance Committee met on the 20th of October and reviewed these recommendations. And the Finance Committee recommends that we approve Cheryl Morgan's recommendations with a thank you for the work done to contain our cost and save money in some areas.
So you'd be fine with it in one lump sum of one vote?
Yes.
Good. Thank you.
Do you have other recommendations?
Some plan recommendations.
Okay. All right. We'll wait until the end and we'll take the vote.
The only recommendation we're making on the health plan is that you address the cost of non-specialty brand drugs by whenever possible, purchasing them from, believe it or not, Canada, where we can get those drugs much less expensively. In the United States, we pay more for brand drugs than you pay in other developed countries. So Canada is a place where we can get brand drugs at about a 30% to 60% discount. And the way this program would work is there's a company called Rescribe, and they will reach out to any members who are taking a drug that can be sourced from Canada. So it's not generic drugs. It's brand drugs. So an example of that would be Ozempic. That's a drug a lot of people take for type 2 diabetes. And if the member wants to participate, they don't have to. It's a completely voluntary program, then Rescribe will set them up in the program and they'll get up to a 90-day supply of their medication delivered to their home at no cost to them. So in order to encourage them to participate, you waive their copays. And the plan receives a big discount on those drugs over what you would otherwise get.
One caution on that from experience, and the good news is, you're right. I had a drug that I was getting out of Canada 30 years ago. But it was an injection. And when the temperature was down to about eight degrees, it froze in my mailbox. So that's one exception that has to be accounted for when it's being shipped as opposed to...
Yes. And Rescribe has methods for delivering drugs that are sensitive to temperatures. And they make arrangements for those drugs to be either signed for by the member or delivered in, you know, a special cooler, something like that. Because, you know, even those, these drugs aren't as expensive as specialty meds. We don't want to have waste and we don't want people to receive their meds and, you know, they're no good and then they have to wait for another shipment.
It's worth knowing that that can happen.
Yes. Absolutely. That's definitely a good point and something that Rescribe will be very careful about.
Now, just for employees' benefit, these drugs, they can still go to their local pharmacy. Does it not affect that at all?
No. They have the choice.
Okay.
Yes. Purely voluntary.
So on that drug that you mentioned, that some people are taking for weight loss, are they able to go through that company to get a discounted rate on the weight loss drug or no?
No, because your plan requires that the patient be a type 2 diabetic in order to get that drug. And Medben will be coordinating with Rescribe to make sure that the member meets the criteria for that medication.
So how do we go through and start looking to offer that to our employees as a weight loss drug? Because one of the biggest problems we have is being overweight.
Obesity.
Obesity, which leads to a lot of other health problems. And so you figure that if there is something that they could use that their doctor prescribed, could prescribe them, it might, while it might be expensive on one end, it probably could save on some other things. So...
And it was our borderline diabetics that are the ones that were having all the trouble not being able to get the medicine.
Correct. Yeah, correct. But I mean, just in general, if we, we have some people that have an obesity problem and, and I'm not speaking for me, although I probably should, but, but, you know, how do we, how do we work that into our plan where, I mean, it can be offered, it can be something that might stop other issues that are, we're going to pay a lot more money for down the road?
It's a great question and is one that...
Fabulous question.
Yeah. Believe me, the industry in general is struggling with that issue because these are, these are great medications. They control diabetes well. They help people lose weight. They can offset other costs that might hit the medical plan. But they are extremely expensive. That's, the biggest issue is the expense.
In the United States, they're expensive.
Yes. They're still expensive coming from Canada, but less expensive, about 20% to 30% less expensive from Canada. But we are definitely sensitive to that issue and exploring ways to help people in a, you know, in a reasonable fashion to be able to obtain those medications when they need them. And that's something that we're going to be continuing to explore in the coming months. One possible avenue toward allowing some coverage for weight loss medications would be to allow your members to go out and purchase them through direct-to-consumer channels. For example, Eli Lilly has a program for Zepbound, which is one of the weight loss drugs that is in high demand right now. And members can go through Eli Lilly's, sorry, Eli Lilly's website and purchase Zepbound for anywhere between $350 and $500 a month, which is a lot less expensive than the drug is when it hits a health plan. It's about $1,200 to $1,500 a month when the drug comes through the normal channels. So you could potentially allow members to purchase the drug and then reimburse them through a health reimbursement arrangement. So you're getting it at a lower price point there.
Yeah.
So yes, that's one of the things we're looking at. And of course, you know, you want to make sure that it's somebody who truly needs it, somebody who's, you know, not just a little bit overweight, but probably more toward the obesity end of the scale. Because two out of every three American adults are either overweight or obese. So when you think about the number of people who are covered under your health plan who would need that standard, it's a lot, it ends up, you know, even at that lower price point, being potentially a lot of money. It's not that these aren't great drugs. They're great drugs, but they're just so expensive that, you know, the industry and health plans like yours are really struggling to figure out a way of allowing people to have the medications without bankrupting the plan for everybody else. So that's one avenue. We're also partnering with a company who can help you, help your members achieve some lifestyle changes while they're taking the medication so that they can come off of the medication after a year or two. Because without that support, what we're finding is that as soon as people stop taking the medication, they gain all the weight back. And that's, you know, not a good result for anybody. So we're working on it.
Do we not cover any other weight loss, like surgeries or anything like that?
I don't believe the plan covers the weight loss surgery.
We've had...
Or may, do you? Okay.
So that's kind of the problem that we have. It's like, how come we don't cover such, something to that extent where, you know, we wouldn't cover something that would be less expensive, that would avoid getting into the surgery aspect. So...
Yeah. These are all great questions. And we are definitely working on methodology for adding some coverage of the weight loss drugs without it, you know, really exploiting the plan costs.
Yeah. It would be great for us to have that information come, you know, February, March, when we start looking at our budget for next year.
Okay. Yep.
And really just kind of see, I'd like to possibly see, you know, without getting into HIPAA problems or whatever, but, you know, maybe look at what we're spending on bariatric surgeries or wealth and the cost of these medicines. But I like the idea of at least giving them an option to go through a health spending account to get it or, you know, partially covered for a certain amount of time, you know?
Yeah. Yeah.
So, okay.
Sometimes it just doesn't make sense, but thank you for being proactive and looking for a solution.
Oh, sure. Absolutely.
I really have to bring this up related to that because of the costs. We just went through our health fair this week. And I weigh 181. The BMI, I don't want to tell you what it is. But if you... But if you...
Good morning.
Good morning.
So, I'll give you our numbers real quick before we start on that. So, currently we have 42 county inmates, 81 state inmates, 35 of those are South, and three for others, so it gives us a total of 127. And then we have one inmate this morning that has cancer needing surgery, which he was supposed to leave this morning to go back into state custody. So, they're helping us out with that. So, what I'm here for is kind of want to introduce our Phase One of what we're going to be doing for our county inmates on reentry. And I want to introduce Aaron and Elena. They're with the Office of Adult Education, Reentry and Employment Services. And we're going to be providing some classes. And like I said, this is just Phase One, and I'll let them take it from here.
Hey, good morning, everybody.
Morning.
My name is Aaron Pointer. I'm the Director of the Reentry and Employment Services Branch with the Office of Adult Education and the Education Labor Cabinet. So, a few years ago, we started really taking an intentional focus to try to not only reach, but also to upskill, to help with the workforce, education, and train, all of those things for incarcerated individuals, right? I understand that jails, folks in jails, they need, they need some of that directed assistance, right? And so, since 2019, we have been expanding a program that we call Putting Kentuckians First. We're very intentional. So, specifically talking about this Phase One that we're bringing to Boyle County, we'll be Putting Kentuckians First. And in the detention center, we're going to start off with pre-release classes. And what that is, is that is just a very intentional educational forum where service providers come in and they're able to say, hey, my name is Aaron Pointer, this is what I do, this, you know, this is my job, and this is how I could help you, right? And we're going to start doing that. I think we've already got one on the books to begin. And that's really kind of our first step in being able to start increasing their awareness. The really cool thing about it is we've done this for a few years, and we've expanded very rapidly across the state, is we set things up, and we understand that individuals that are sitting there perhaps need IDs, right? And so, we have mechanisms and ways to get folks IDs, the GED, which is already present in the detention center, but being able to say, like, hey, we're going to focus on this, we're going to get your GED. Everything we do is focused on getting them back into the workforce, right? Getting them, helping them live with a purpose, and giving them the tools to be able to do that. Not to be dependent on the system, but using the system to push and, and help them kind of continue on their path of success, right? And so, that's Phase One. We're also going to, and I speak for the entire workforce system here, but your Workforce Development Board, your Office of Adult Education, your local Office of Adult Education, your local Office of Vocational Rehabilitation, being able to bring all of those intentionally to say, hey, this is what we offer. How can we tailor programming or classes to you, right? Resumes, job searches, how to act, right? How to go through and, and conduct an interview and, and do that. And so, that was really, that is our Phase One package. And so, moving forward, we have seen success with the process of doing it like this. But Phase One, we get started, start building our awareness of, hey, this is what we all do. A lot of these services are already present in the county. I've named things that you probably already know, but really taking an intentional lens and focusing it at those individuals, really, we've seen tremendous outcomes for that. We have a very high employment and retention rate for individuals that we work with. And I think, I looked at the numbers yesterday, we've already reached and impacted about 2,300 individuals that are incarcerated since July of this year. So, we're really excited to bring this. And really, that opens up a lot of opportunities as far as some additional classes and certifications that we can bring. Also, you know, thinking about, and this could be Phase One, or Phase One and a half or two, but some credential training programs and some certificate programs, talking about like safety, first aid, CPR, OSHA 10, some forklifts, some different things like that. So, what we do, really, as my branch, or as our branch, and Alana is the representative of our branch for Boyle County, she's already very active in the area. We have a lot of the external things going on, but we're really excited to bring it to the detention facility because the more we invest and we give these, these folks opportunities, they're the ones that's going to be shopping at Kroger that we shop at. Their kids are going to go to school at the same place that our kids go to school, right? And so, by equipping them with opportunities to advance themselves, it just benefits, right? We take them from being a tax burden to a tax benefit, and it really reflects really well. And as far as workforce is concerned, just developing pipelines of workers to be able to go to our businesses to where they're not having, you know, as many personnel issues, right? And they're going to these businesses as employees with a supported wraparound network. And here's the last thing I'll say, and then of course I'd be happy to take any questions. The really cool thing is, and I'm not speaking from theory, I'm speaking from something that we've seen work in 80 counties, right? When they leave, when they exit the detention facility, not only are they equipped with, better than when they went in, right? But they are equipped with somebody to call when things don't go just, you know, perfect, right? Life happens. They are equipped with somebody that's going to follow up with them and say, hey, is everything going okay?
So, you initiate calls?
Absolutely. I'll give you an example. We actually call four times a year. We call every single person that is a participant in Putting Kentuckians First. The reason we do that is, one, we say, hey, everything going okay? Yes, no? If it's not, how can we get reengaged? And we also do that as far as a workforce development side of things, because I want to know, what is our return on investment, right? What is our median wage for people that are going through our program? Because I have to report that. I'll say this, between second quarter and fourth quarter of this year, we had about a dollar an hour average up with how much our participants are making, right? As far as the collective state. We also, we gauge all that, and we do that by county as well. So, we track literally everything because we do firmly believe, and we know proven by data, that it is impactful to our communities. So, does anybody have any questions, or is there anything I need to expand on?
I just want to make this is for our county inmates?
Yes.
And then also, how much the lawyers cost physical court?
So, this is going to cost you nothing. So, that's a good thing, right? All of these services are provided by not only my branch, but also our other workforce development partners. We have partnerships, and this is something that is available to citizens on the outside that is fairly easily accessible, right? You just need to know where to go. We're going to bring all of this in and be able to do that. Really, the only thing that we ask, or we need, is we need space and, and time to be able to do it, right? In the support of, of the jailer and the staff to be able to say, hey, you know, can we come in and take care of this at this point here, right? So, nothing is, is, there's no cost incurred to the jail. We're not going to send a bill or anything like that. We just really like the opportunity. The way we get paid, right, is outcomes, right? That is job security for us, is the outcome. And being able to go and, in a year, say, hey, have you seen a change, right? Have you, have you noticed difference? To be able to go and talk to your district judges and say, have you seen a difference with the individuals? The county attorney, right? Partnering with county attorneys, and being able to say, have you seen a difference since we started doing this? And I can speak to the ones that I've talked to, there is, they definitely do see a difference in this. And we're excited to bring it. And it is going to be focused on our county guys, right? Because those are the individuals that are going to be getting out, and they're going to stay here, right? A lot of times, your county folks are your quick-term guys. Those are the guys that are immediately going to be getting out. They're going to be looking for a job here. They're going to be looking for resources here. Not necessarily to say, you know, there isn't something, you know, if somebody walks out, they may go to Fulton County. Like, okay, well, we have mechanisms to help somebody over there. But this is very hyper-focused on Boyle County residents and people that are going to be in this area, right?
There was a very good segment on Channel 18 last night that we ought to look at, all of us ought to look at, because I know you can find it on the internet. A gentleman who was incarcerated for 24 years was picked up by DV8, the restaurant over in, in Lexington. And listen to him about getting an opportunity. It's only a clip of three or four minutes, but it's what you're trying to manifest for everybody, that we're already doing a fabulous job in our jailer.
Yes.
But this one, handsome.
Hey, you know, that's the thing. We have, you know, success stories after success stories, but that is not uncommon. That is not an uncommon story. Alana is back here, and she, I mean, we'll head home, and we'll just share stories about those good outcomes. That's the thing. You know, I had a guy, an individual, when I first started. He was in federal custody for 20-some years. And now, he makes probably double of what I do, right? And those are good stories. I was like, man, what am I doing in my life, right? But, but the way he did that is being able to stack all of those resources and not a one-off. And that's really our, our target here is, it's not just, I'm going to go here and get this help for two weeks, and then this help. If we can all come together and say, like, hey, this help is out here. It's already, and you're going to access it at some point, but if we do this in a structured manner, instead of just two weeks here, and a week here, and this, that, and a pair of work boots, and we can do it all together, it really elongates and helps kind of build that on-ramp back to society. And that's what we're about. So, absolutely, 100%, I look forward to those same success stories coming from people that you know, right? It's not something you're going to see on the, on the news. It's going to be this knucklehead that I've known him, and he's been in and out for years and years and years. There you go. That, that's the kind of stories that we want to cultivate in, in Boyle County, so.
How many county detention centers are you currently serving?
Oh, goodness, a lot. There's 77, so we, we have a very strong presence in all of the South Central. So, there's seven in the South Central region. There are, help me out, it's, it's hard for me to say.
More than two.
More than eight.
Oh, yeah, no, absolutely.
I got you.
Yeah, yeah. We have Franklin County that we're servicing up here, Woodford, Boyle, and Alana's really taken a very good step into the Bluegrass region.
Yeah.
That's what you all are, is for workforce development.
Right.
All the ones in the Cumberland's, we are servicing, some out in, in the Pike, east, far Eastern Kentucky, Dixie, Sandy. So, I could name them a lot easier than come up with a number. I should have had that, but quite a lot.
Okay. And are any of these services covered, like, with a grant?
So, interestingly enough, not really. And so, when I say that, a lot of it is, have you ever heard of WEOWA?
Yes.
Okay. So, WEOWA, of course, is federal allocation that comes down, and that's what funds our Workforce Development Boards. So, that is one component of it. My branch is another one that is fully state-funded.
Okay.
So, no, not grant-funded at all. Now, we do seek external grants if we want to do something big, or if we want to try to launch a project, we will seek external funding or grants to be able to do those things. But as of today, well, I'll tell you, we got a grant from the opioid abatement, or Kentucky ASAP, if you're familiar with that, to increase our supportive services, right? And we did that as a pilot to say, like, okay, like, like I said about IDs, right? In my opinion, there's no reason for 11, or 12, or $20 piece of plastic to really hold somebody back from getting their GED, or being able to apply for a job or anything like that. So, what we did is we said, well, we're going to allocate our branch funds to that, and that's something good. And then we said, well, let's go ahead and apply for this grant to support that initiative. So, we were already funding it, but we wanted to expand it and show the case and say, look, this is something that's really benefiting individuals in the county. So, anybody that's a part of reentry activities or seeking adult education, they call us. We help facilitate getting them identification, and it's a very easy process that we've worked out with a partnership with DOT and...
So, most of it then is covered by federal funds?
Federal and state funds.
Okay.
Yes, yes.
All right. Any questions, comments? That's good, that's great.
So, that's Phase One. And Phase Two, and what we plan on doing is working on providing opportunities for them to get some education and training in something like the five major trades. It could be welding, or plumbing, or electrical. So, that's going to be our Phase Two, once we get this going. And that, also, I want to kind of go ahead and ask the fiscal court, when the road department moves out, I would like to have that building, because that would give us the space to provide Phase Two, you know, if it's welding or whatever. So, we're going to be able to provide those classes. I'd like to ask you all for that. And then also, I sent an email yesterday, I think, out to everybody requesting that this new, this year's funding for the opioid abatement money, for $250,000. That goes to providing the net device for our inmates. It's $5,000 each time they use it. So, I think, and I spoke with Julie yesterday, so I would like you all to consider that too, this year.
We need to act on that. I think there's a deadline for the...
December 13th, I think, is the cutoff for the grant.
Yeah, that's critical.
December 13th.
I think so.
We better jump in there early.
I think it's December.
Okay.
I think, I don't know, though. But I sent you the lady with KCO, she can give you the information on that as well. But I've spoken with two other jailers, and we just came back from a conference last week, and they say it makes, it works, it makes a big difference. That basically takes the craving away. And that's a big problem, is somebody's going out and going into treatment, and they're still craving whatever drug or substance they were abusing. So, if you remove that from them, and then put them into treatment, their success rates will be a lot higher. So, that's kind of why we're asking for that. That gives us another tool besides just the mat and some other things we're doing, but it puts another tool in our toolbox.
Okay. We won't take any action on that part today because we're going to have a meeting with Gene Deathridge from Bluegrass Aid. You're probably familiar with him, yeah? He's the opioid representative through Bluegrass Aid, and we're going to have a meeting with him to come in and kind of help us walk through the opioid money and all the best practices.
So, that's directly for that quarter million dollar grant, what you're talking about?
No, no. I'm talking, you're talking to opioid funds?
I'm talking opioid fund. We already have opioid fund. No, that's separate from my...
So, I can, technically, I can apply for the opioid grant myself, but I have to get an EIN number. And I don't want to have to do that.
Okay.
But I'd rather go through this before, because then, everything we purchase from the jail will have to go through that new EIN number, yet not the old, and I just don't want to cause much confusion. So, that's why I'm like, you know, when you all buy this year to, to remember the jail included.
Yeah.
And that's why I emphasized that, because I wanted to know if it was the same or...
We don't normally apply for the opioid funds because we're getting, we're getting those payments directly to pharmacies.
Well, this is, I think, above...
So, this is above that.
Yeah, each county gets so much, so this one you have to apply for.
Right.
And the lady, and the lady...
So, we can apply for that.
That, we can do that.
And the lady at the KCO, she can help you with that.
So, it's not using any of our opioid settlement lines?
It's adding on. So, each county gets so much from that money.
I understand that.
Then you can apply for more.
All right.
So, that's what this is, this is on top of.
So, we can get, we can get $250,000 from that grant?
If they approve it, I mean, we'll have to send it in and say, I mean, it's just like any other grant, you've got to apply for it and tell, show the need and everything. So, I base my numbers on, we average about 50 county inmates. It's $5,000 a use, and so, it's $250,000, that's.
So, that's each year we have to come up with that money?
Yes, as long as that money's there, and if not, then we'll have to figure out another way to fund it. But I think if the money's there, the opportunity's there, we need to take advantage of it now.
We have about, what is it, 450 in our opioid money? I can't remember.
And I will send you an invite to that meeting with Jane.
370, okay. So, out of the pool of money that we draw down every month, we're going to put together an application process, I think, and Shannon has found a great model in Shelby County. So, that money will treat differently than what this grant...
So, that way, it doesn't take away from EMS and the other resources that's needed here in our community. So, all we're trying to do is add one more resource and then fund it through the grant.
Yes.
That's great.
That's good. That's really good.
So, that way, we can, we can, because you know, I mean, my goal there is to, is help as many people as possible. And I think, without talking to the other two jailers, Boyd County and Skye County, that's providing this program that they...
What are they, what are they spending?
It's $5,000. They run it by us.
No, no, no. No, no. What, what have they spent this year so far on it?
I don't know that number, but I...
Because if you tell me it's $5,000 per use...
Yes.
And it's not like we have, we don't run like an apartment complex where we have the same 50 people in there, they come and go. And so, that revolving door can get very expensive.
Well, not everybody's going to want to do it.
I understand that. I understand that, but, you know, I'm just trying to get a total picture. A lot of times, the problem is we apply for these grants, and these grants are for like a year. And then we've implemented the program, and then next thing you know, now the county's has to fund those, those grants where that grants fell off. So, I'm just trying to understand what our actual financial commitment on this is.
And I think we're going to have to do it for a year to figure that out realistically. You know, money's there, they're paying for it through, through the opioid grant, they applied. Matter of fact, Boyd County actually went and got his own EIN number, so he could apply and receive the money. So, but we have to start somewhere.
Of course, of course, but, you know, if it runs up into like the $700,000 range, because we've got so many inmates that come through that do have addiction problems, you know, we have, we have to, we have to know what we're spending.
Right. And listen, here's the thing, my numbers could change. I could go back there, we could have 400 people in the jail.
Correct.
But can't do anything about that.
Correct.
And Mary remembers when we were at 415.
Yeah, so, you're basing numbers off of 50.
Well, that's right, because that's what I, we're past two years, we're averaging.
I understand that.
So, it's an average. I can't...
I'm well aware of what you're doing. I'm just saying, I'm looking at the worst-case scenario on, okay, now we've got this, and how do we, how do we say no to some and yes to others if, if we've got that many people in there, that many people?
Well, I think this is something, too, we could work with the county attorney and the judges, that if, if they will do this, you know, maybe, maybe use it as some kind of diversion, or to help them go into treatment, you know? So, it gives the county attorney another option, it's okay, if you, if you come in, you do a week or two weeks, you do, you take this, and then we get them out, so that's a, hopefully, when they go to treatment, that's going to lower resuscitism. So, that's going to lower that number. That'll help us there. So, I think it'll balance out. And I understand what you're saying, but, you know, it's hard to...
We would just be funding the first 50 inmates that choose to do it.
Right, through the grant.
Just the first 50. And so, at the first month, you have 50 people take us up on it, then that's all we're going to do.
Right, and that's all we can do until, because we don't have money.
So, nobody else...
Then, when we go back to redo the budget, we'll have some numbers, okay, do we want to match this, or do we want to put in 10%, 20%, and still use the opioid abatement money? That, this just gives us a place to start from.
And liability-wise, where does that put us?
It's, it's applied by them. They sign the contract, it's voluntary, you know, it's nothing that's court-ordered or anything like that. So, they, their team is trained to do it. They come in and monitor it, they set it, they put it on them, take it off of them, follow up with them during that week. So, it's just like having another medical provider that comes in contracts with us. We're going to contract with them to provide the services.
How, how long do they wear the device?
Like, a week, seven days. Depends on the, every, each person's different.
Right.
Depends on how far they are in their addiction, what the, what the substance is, so they can tailor it for each specific county.
And where does, where does Dr. Grant sit on this? He's our, he's our EMS medical director. Have we spoken to him about this, all of that? Where he sits on this?
Well, I talked, I talked to my medical provider with three Cs, and they're okay with it. So, the ones I use, he's a doctor as well.
Originally, he was opposed to it because of the no FDA clearance, but I think they've achieved... That's correct. It is now FDA-approved.
It's because I might, like I say, our medical provider was there at the conference, he's like, yeah. Because they're doing, matter of fact, Boyd County is one of their customers as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Sounds all right. Thank you all for being here.
Thank you.
Have a great day. All right, next up, Recycling Director Angie Muntzey. Come on down.
Nice, everybody.
Good, good.
All right. I don't know which first, but...
Grant, Glass Pulverizer.
Okay, so, we opened bids without trailing.
Nah.
But you missed it.
I know.
But we had two bids. Andela Products was $85,247. Technology International was $91,300. This is for the grant, the glass pulverizer that we received. So, I am asking for a motion to accept Andela Products for their glass pulverizer in the amount of $85,247.
Make the motion that we accept that recommendation.
All right. I have a motion by Minister Gay, second by Minister Harmon. Is there any discussion? When will, when will this all take place?
When we move.
Okay. All right.
Well, now, this machine will probably take, it can take the five to six months to get this machine.
Okay. So, we're looking at spring.
Yeah, we're probably looking at spring before we can actually put it into use, so.
Okay.
Hopefully, earlier, but...
Very good. All right. Any other discussion?
Once we get moved and get the machine, then we'll be able to start taking glass again.
You can bring it to me, and we'll accept it.
Right, exactly.
That's, that's the key.
At the facility.
And I want to remind everybody while I'm here before I go on, that Thursday evening is our recycling forum at InterCounty Energy. Hopefully, lots of people with the city of Danville will come join us, and all that other good stuff.
is our recycling forum at Inter County Energy. Hopefully, lots of people with the city of Danville will come join us and all that other good stuff. So we're looking forward to it.
Yes, we are. All right, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Motion carries.
And so we'll only be collecting at the main facility, this is not something we're going to put-
For glass?
Yes.
Glass will be only the main facility because of contamination.
Yeah.
All right.
And I will explain that, hopefully I see everybody there Thursday evening. We'll have fun. It will be interesting, come and play in the trash. Come play in recycling.
All right, illegal dump grant.
Okay, so this is the first time for this in a long, 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 long time. It hasn't, I have not got what, this is an illegal dump, okay? So what I'm asking for, let's just get down to the main. I am asking the state to come inspect the location at 164 Miners Branch Road, which everybody knows is the old Gordly Store building. Nine chances out of 10 where it has burnt, fell in, and all that stuff, they, you can apply for private property and the illegal dump grant. So these are due, well, this Friday, the grant itself. The state has not given me their AI number yet, which, that's okay, I can still turn the grant in, Trilly can still sign it, and Lisa can get it from them. This is not a guarantee, you know, the AI number and the state saying, yeah, you can use it there. But I'm going to try. The only thing they can, you know me, the only thing they can do is tell me no.
Yeah.
So, but I, I think it's doable. I think if the state inspects it, they will say, yes, let's clean this up, you can clean it up. I'm going to set this dump grant up to bid it out and a contractor clean it. You know, we always had the option for the county to do it, but we don't have time to do that. I'd rather, and there is probably not no, being over the amount, we will probably not have no match to it at all. It'll be a free thing.
And this is a location that we've received numerous, numerous complaints about.
For several years.
Well, for the last two and a half that I know.
So it would be this singular spot as opposed to six magistrates identifying places and some of the money going?
No, it would be just one spot.
This is for illegal dump grant only.
For one location.
You know, there's, I had to explain this to Trilly, because Trilly's thinking, you had the same thought, is there's several places I can think of.
It's scary, isn't it?
Yeah.
It's scary, however, there is one spot that, it's like I told Trilly, no, because this place burnt. You know, they let it, you know, they put it out, so it's already fell in and everything, so it allows- I think it will allow, like I said, I'm not 100% on this, all we can do is-
Try.
Try. But you know, if it's free money and we can get that, that's one we can clean up.
I don't think it took place even within our previous term, but there was a huge cleanup of batteries in Junction City. How many years back was that?
That was before me.
Been a while.
Yeah, that was before me.
It's that type grant to get that type situation.
Yes, it's, it's, it's a, yeah. You have, there's a specific, there are specifics to this, and the states, when they come out, they inspect and have to give you the AI tempo number, and they give their, may give them my thoughts of say, they say, well, Angie, I think it's only going to take this much to clean it up, and blah, 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 so.
Yeah.
I have, like I said, this just came about last, end of last week, and it's been boom, 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 so.
So you need a motion to approve the grant application?
To let you assign it, and we try for it.
Okay.
So $65,000 the amount you're applying for?
That's what I think it was, I, you know, of course, I talked to Rogers, somebody that knows about county equipment, and you know, if I knew all that stuff, I'd be okay too, but, but yes. So he thinks it costs that to, you know, somebody to, especially the dump bill. Especially because if we do this, I'm not going to allow it to be buried on site. It's going to have to go to the landfill, so they're going to have to be responsible for the tipping fees. Whoever does this and gets the bid, of course, we'll take the bids, and we'll be the one opening the bids and awarding it. It'll be up to them to do it all. Tipping fees, everything, so this is my guess on it. And that's talking to people that knows, you know, about equipment. You know, if I'd done equipment and, Angie, I'd be, I wouldn't be standing here doing this, so. But I'll take any questions, I'll try to answer them, but that's the best I can explain to you what's going to happen.
I'll make the motion that we have the 500,000 grant.
Okay, I have a motion by magistrate Gay, second by magistrate Ellis. Any discussion on the application? Anything done, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Motion carries.
It's just all about the money.
Go get the money.
I have your signature, man.
Angie, do you have the numbers, you said you had numbers for the Allen Springs, for the numbers relating to the smoke, you said they were better than?
They told me that. I don't have, what you have is what I have.
Okay, and so I contacted them and mentioned that I wanted their numbers, and they said they didn't do any numbers.
They don't, they just, they can look at and tell you it's good. But that's how they do. I think we got an email back, which, it wasn't on the agenda, so I'm really not, I don't have that stuff in front of me. But basically, they don't do that unless the permit requires it.
Right, that's what I-
I did hear back from the permit. We got, I got a few things to fill in, us to sign and send to, and we'll be finished with that, but unless it's on our-
We were under the impression when they came that they had done some kind of-
That's what he gave, he said it's good in standards, and that's what he told me.
That, that's what we were understood, that they did a testing. When she called them back to get the information you were requesting, that's when they told her they eyeballed it.
And they eyeballed it and said the numbers were good and it was right.
I specifically, Trilly's got that email.
According to the amount of smoke and how quickly it dissipated, that's what they were judging it on.
That's really bad.
Well, I'm not air quality.
Yeah.
I can only go by what they rule, so you got the report and-
magistrate Gay.
Yes, and we've talked about this before. I really think it would be helpful if we could get the air burner people to come back to our community and give us a-
Well, they are, I was waiting on everything to come through, and we're going to put them on a call with us.
Well, yeah, and I even would like them to be here, and I mean specifically-
A representative.
Yeah, representative of, you know, this is what, this is the type of material you can put in, this is what it should look like and be like.
That's what they'll do, yeah.
And don't put, you know, and I think it ought to be a field trip, and we all go out and participate and invite, you know, anybody that wants to come in the community.
Well, I'd get you all certified, like 12 of us was, we can all go out there and get certified.
I know, that'd be good too, and we, so that way we can, because you know, I just don't feel like it's operating like we were told it was supposed to operate.
It basically is operating right, the problem, the only problem that we had is some of it is wet. So when it first goes in, it is the brown smoke and then it settles. And you have about 30, 50, you know, you have about 30 minutes, but usually it's been settling within like 10, 15. So that's the only problem, the old stuff is what we're having problems with.
Well, yeah, so that's where I think we need to figure out how to, yeah, how to balance that out.
Can you just set up a field trip for us?
Do you want, you know, they have, they have several departments, it depends on what you want, what you want me to bring here. We, I mean, they have an environmental team that we can put right there and throw 100 million questions at.
We want the people-
Or do we want the people that certified 12 of us to use it to come do that again?
Well, I think-
And we may have to pay for that. Because that was in the grant, we paid them like $7,000, $8,000 to come and train and certify.
Well, I think the people that need to come are the ones that can look at it and fire it up and tell us that-
Them's the same ones.
That it's burning correctly and-
Them's the ones that can certify.
And everything is, is working.
So are we willing to pay, if it's a charge, should I come back or?
Come back and report and let the court-
And I still don't want it, you know, I'm still against it being burning at Allen Springs. I still definitely-
Well, all the stuff's still out there, so I wouldn't know what you'd do with all that stuff if we didn't burn it.
Well, we may have to chip it, I don't know, but you know, I don't want to burn it.
We're not spending another $100,000 to chip it.
Well, I'm just telling you, if you want to send somebody to the hospital, then that's fine, burn it.
And if you want somebody to be ill, that's what we've got to look at.
I've got 80 trees on my property, so I have burned, I can't even begin to count the times in 24 years. We need a dry shed, and we need not burn a week like the one we have here, because you will not be able to make it abate if it's even damp, let alone wet like we have here. I've, I've had reservations, I think I even was recorded as abstaining on this equipment, knowing what it's like to burn, so I have real concerns. And I've reluctantly said that maybe it needs to be in the most remote, least populated area that either magistrate owner or I have, because it is going to be a significant problem anywhere in a populated area.
We burnt down at Perryville and not, didn't have one complaint, and that was with the burn permit.
I do all the time, and I'm between here and Perryville.
But we done it there, and there was, you know, there was no complaints, we've done it properly, so. The only thing I can say is, you know, I'm doing the best I can, I asked the whole court, did they want me to apply for this grant? We all went to Palasque County.
Yeah, and I went to-
And I have reservations down there.
And I still ask here, did you want me to apply for this grant?
Yep. And I said, no, if it's going to be in Allen Springs.
Everybody said, yes, apply for it.
No.
I said-
Majority did.
The majority did, not all of us. Because I said, is it going to be in Allen Springs? And you said, yeah, that's where it's going to be.
Well, that's where all your stuff, stuff is at right now, so, but. Nobody's going to the hospital, I mean, it's a good thing, I still say that, but I'll get, I'll get their people on board here. I'll see what we can do. I'll see, everybody get certified also.
Have you been out while it's operating, or are you just making assumptions?
I was at the one in Palasque County.
No, 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 my, my question was, have you been out hours while it's running?
I have not.
And you're making assumptions, okay. I would, I would recommend that everybody goes out there when we do get, if-
Well, I think when they got it coming, we have to pay for it, everybody just go get a certificate like 12 of us did.
But all of us go out there the same day, see how it operates, ask questions. One of the other problems that we have too, is not only are you getting wet material, but you're also getting dirt, because you don't have-
Dirt is a big thing.
You don't have the proper equipment to place in it. To load it in is one of the other problems.
And hopefully, another grant will get us that, or we can, you know, my next thing, if we fire it back up, is to rent something just to get that old out of there. So we are looking at a new place, but we haven't got that, you know, I haven't got that far yet, so.
I don't want to see us have to move this brush to a new location. We're going to have to mitigate it where it's at, I think. So maybe if we bring somebody in, we'll figure out if we're doing something wrong. We train the person putting the dirt in, stop that, maybe that'll help it. And I think we talked to the people surrounding it, that it didn't bother me, I could smell it really bad of a night, but we didn't, we went in the house and we were fine. But outside, it was strong, but it bothered two of my neighbors, severely bothered them. And I, you know, we need to, if you're going to fire it back up, which I totally am against, then we need to see what we're going to do about those neighbors, because they cannot not be able to live in their homes. One of them, Jimmy, just gets it occasionally when the wind blows the wrong way. But Brady Green gets it every time it's, burns, every time. His wife Lisa too.
But now, to move, we will have to have money, because it was $5,000 just to take it off the trucks. And to move it, you're talking 30 tons, so you're probably talking another, I'd say on a gear, you're talking about 15, 20,000 to move it and put it somewhere else, so. That's just information.
Yeah.
The good thing is going forward, we mitigate what's at Allen Springs. If you burn as it comes in, and don't let it sit there and rot, I think that'll-
It will, once you get, once we get caught up, it's never going to-
We have to stop taking at Allen Springs.
That's about the choice you want to have, either stop taking or-
We have to take, stopping, stop taking any brush right now. If we, if we do not have the ability to burn it or do something with it, because I'm not, I'm not paying for a chipper. We're not chipping anymore. So we just need to give Angie the direction to stop taking any wood and any debris until we get the new property purchased, this thing moved over and taken care of.
Number one, you can't say, we're not chipping it.
I can sure, I just did.
You can say, we, you could say, I'm not going to vote for it to be chipped.
I can say whatever I want, this is America, last time I checked.
Well, you can say that, but you can't include me in your statement.
I didn't include you, I would very rarely include you in my statement.
Exactly, that's exactly right, you very definitely don't. But here's the thing, we have to take a vote, and we individually would say that if we wanted the chipper, which I don't want the big expensive chipper. But I want to find a way besides going about it and making my neighbor sick, which I told you before we put it in there, that was my concern, is a health, major health concern. Okay, that, I just want to make sure that's, everybody knows that, and we may be able to work something out to get rid of that, but I don't know what it is that I can keep him well.
And a recommendation that I would make is that whomever in government does measure air quality, that we actually have data, which was mentioned when this was presented, that we would have data. We have no idea what degree of pollution we cause.
Right.
And caused in the, in the firing up for the first time of this equipment that we have. So we must have data. If we have that come together meeting out there for a burn, we have to have someone there who knows scientifically how to measure the pollutants that are coming out.
That's why I said-
And I know what's going to happen, and it's going to be just like that animal was.
Okay, well, the reason we put it there is because the convenience center is joint, city and county. And city and county both bring in brush to that area, that's where it's always been brought, well, since Perryville stopped taking brush. But, so that's the reason, it's because there was brush already there that needed to be burned. And that's the location to bring brush. With that being said, you can call out to the county fire department and get a permit to have a fire, and there's no testing done for that. You can have a brush fire, you get a permit number, and you can burn anywhere in the county.
Right.
So-
But they're not going to burn six days a week all day long.
You've got somebody out there that's just set up a deal, Frank. That's going to have fire pits.
I have not ever been around the counties where somebody burns 24/7, six days a week, well, not 24 hours, but eight hours. But here's the thing, I voted against it because of this exact instance. That's what I wanted to prevent this, don't get it if we don't have a place for it that's not going to cause turmoil in the county. And then I voted against it, it went, and I said, okay, I got outvoted, I told my neighbors, I got outvoted. It's coming, and I thought, well, maybe, maybe it'll be okay. Maybe it really won't be bad, and it'll all be good. Well, when that neighbor called and said, what have you done to this, you know, to us? What have you done? And then Angie said on the last thing, she said, the numbers say it's even better. So I wanted the numbers, I want to see the numbers that says it's even better than normal when they-
Well, I want to make sure there, the burner people here, air quality's here, we'll make sure they're all here. You've got to remember, there's four different state agencies, and none of them's holding hands in this.
And here's the funny thing, is, you know, it's just supposed to be that big puff of smoke once a day when it starts up, that is incorrect. I've spent hours driving by, going by, sitting out and looking at it, and driving into the convenience center and looking at it and watching it smoke, more than that one day when Jamie and I were there and it had that little tiny dab of smoke.
Well, that's why we want to get the people here, to make sure that there's not something wrong with the burner.
There's always going to be your little daps, that's why it's always within the thing. But I'm not going to sit here and explain it to you, I'll let the professionals come, and then you all can talk to them and see for yourself. The only thing I need to know at this point, if we're going to stop brush, then we need to talk to the city, because the city brings every piece of brush out there.
We can't just stop it because it's joint with the city.
That's where they bring theirs at, and it is joint with the city, so.
Absolutely, I understand that.
Then we have to talk to the city, and we can't do anything with it, it's just going to pile up. And, and what we said was-
And the city gives a recommendation for this, the same way.
Well, the judge made the executive order to do that, we can talk to-
We can talk to Earl and see.
They sent, you know, they gave me a recommendation letter for this burner to help out.
If we...
So in the grant.
If we stop it going out there and tell the city, ask them to do the same, then if it stops, we're gonna have to do something quickly to change everything. So it'll make everything happen more quickly, so. It's just my comments.
Say what you can get set up, as soon as you can.
It was a temporary location. That is what we voted on. We did acknowledge that it was going to be a temporary location.
That we were gonna burn what was there, and then find a new location.
Because we're going to get a lot more stuff when we start making this trail park system out there. So we're gonna have a lot. I mean, I know they're not gonna take down too many.
Well, you have an ice storm or anything, you're gonna get more.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Anything, you're...
Getting power in, anything.
We do have a way to get rid of it, we need to stop taking it.
Is that what should I do right now? Are you, I mean, I can't do nothing to tell anybody.
But no, we can, we can, we can vote on our side about, and, and, and talk about, you know...
Well, we can make it just where the city themselves only bring it, and not the people.
I think the right thing to do is talk to Earl. Judge can issue an executive order, then it's taken care of. But if you're gonna stop the county and the city, it's where most of the brush comes from.
It is.
The majority comes from the city.
You should probably get an idea of where your magistrates sit on this before the judge issues an executive order.
Okay.
That's kinda where I would say, we can, we can gauge what the fiscal court wants to do.
Let's do that.
And then we can ask you to go speak with the city.
And that meeting at the site is the critical point. I wanna make a motion that the judge arrange a date when we all go out there, and that we get the appropriate state agency that has the scientific measurement equipment to get the data when a burn is taking place.
Okay, I don't know that we need a motion. That's what I just told Angie to do.
I'll formalize it.
You want for, okay, all right. So we have motion by magistrate Ellis, second by magistrate Bodner, any discussion?
Just be careful when you start inviting state agencies out to places. They can, they can find other things that you may not want them to find. And it, it's happened in the past where we've rushed a judgment on things, we've called state agencies in, and now we've got water issues.
It won't be the EPA, it was the air quality.
It's KDAC, Kentucky Department of Air Quality.
Yeah, so.
I'm gonna email the... We have, Trilly, no, I, I have sent the email and asked specific questions. And Trilly has been CC'd on that.
And I will send that letter that I got from the EPA, because I had so many questions about that comment about, you know, there's, the numbers are good, that I emailed them with specifics, and I'll send it to you so you can share it with everybody.
And you can share mine as well.
I can, okay, I didn't know if you included everybody or...
No, I just, I included all the state agencies that was involved. CC Trilly, so she has some specifics that Paula asked, that I turned around to ask air quality, so she can send all them answers to you all as well, so.
Call and question.
All right, concerning the motion on the floor, we have call for question. All those in favor of the motion signify the saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay?
Nay.
Okay, we're gonna have to do a hand count, Madam Clerk?
Yes.
All right. So you go around the table and, all right, record the votes, please. Magistralis?
Aye.
magistrate Bodner, yes?
Nay.
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 Judge, I will make a comment here. We cannot, we cannot move that piece of equipment anywhere that's a populated area. And I think my comment there, which is rather forceful, will be supported when scientific equipment is brought out there during a burn. And because this burn has to take place year round, it's gonna have to have some wet wood when it first starts up, and then measurement six or eight hours later to see what the trend of the air quality is over the period of a burn, usually lasts eight hours.
I mean, I started up...
The only thing that's measured that I know of in the state is the city of Louisville and the city of Lexington.
Okay.
I mean, if that's the case, we're gonna have to stop issuing burn permits throughout the county. If that's, if you're that worried about the, about the smoke and everything.
But I will get, so if I can get to, I'll do my best to get the appropriate ones here and do what I can.
But I do think, I mean, we have to talk to Chief Sexton and say, no more burn permits throughout the county. Because, because we could be polluting the air with all of these various burns that are unscheduled, unsanctioned, un, you know, no one's, no one's looking at them, so.
Oh, that's not true.
I think that's being a little bit exaggerated because we know everybody burns out in the county. There's gonna be burns. We're talking about a facility that is government-run that is causing some of the people that pay the taxes to get the grants. The grant money's not, the grant's not free, comes from tax money. And it's provided, and we're making some of them, some, more than one has commented, more than two, more than three, that it's been making them not having a good quality of life. And so we have to...
Before it was the noise of the chipper, now it's the smell of the smoke.
I've never heard anybody complain about the chipper.
They always do.
Never, never, to me, anybody...
Fires down the road's pretty bad. I've had several complaints by...
I've never had a complaint in Allen Springs about the chip, never. So thus being said, we know people, my neighbor come over and said, I gotta, I'm gonna burn. And I said, well, you need to get a permit for that. And he went and got a permit, and he said, I will burn tonight. And he let me know, didn't bother me a bit. But if you have it going all the time, look at the amount of debris that comes in to that place. That is constant burning all the time, year round, when the weather's, you know, good. So that's what we're concerned with. We're not concerned with people over here burning once, and here burning. We're talking about one solid place that this taxpayer, these groups of taxpayers are helping to pay for to make their life miserable. And that's, that's all I'm concerned about. I think that's enough, it's, it's just...
Make sure you get it for me.
Okay, yeah, and just to, I hope to kinda maybe wrap this up is that I think it's important to recognize that all of our citizens' health and well-being is important to all of this, first of all. The city and county are actively looking for a better place to take the brush to. So I think it's important, everybody knows that. It's, it's not gonna happen overnight. We're actively looking for a better location. So I think that's important for everybody to recognize. I think we're saying we wanna get this equipment, we wanna figure out how it can run most effectively. Because when it does run effectively, I think it's better than people burning their brush, open air burns. I think that's what this equipment is designed to do. I do think, you know, over, you know, we need to learn the numbers in air quality. I just think we're getting ahead of ourselves. That's my reason for voting no on this issue. I think that we need to give Angie some grace and time to... I think she's getting the message of what we're looking for and what we wanna do. And so I do think that, you know, I want, I want the whole Allen Springs neighborhood to be invited to come down and, and hear from the experts what this is supposed to look like and be like. Everybody, all the neighbors should come and, and talk, ask their questions
I'll tell them.
at that time. And, and in the meantime, we're gonna continue to look for a better place. And I'm, I do think, I'm not opposed to working with the city, and if we do need to say we've gotta shut down brush at that location for right now, while we don't have, you know, knock on wood, we don't have a big windstorm or a big ice storm right now, it may be a time to pause the receipt of, of brush there. That means people are gonna burn in their backyard and do all that stuff, wherever they are, but... You can always have an emergency collection if ever. Right, and so anyway, I just wanna, I just wanna make sure we know that we're not as separated as it may seem here, as my, as my perspective. I think we're, we're all just trying to figure out how to get to the better place. That is where the brush is right now. So we are gonna have to handle it right there.
I know.
And with what you have said, and this is very critical, because you've heard me say it now, I think now this will be the third time today. The public is going to have to be aware of this in such a way that they will turn out because everyone in this community who is in a densely populated area is going to have to know that if we can't get it in my northwest corner, if we can't get it in the central south corner of magistrate Bodner, somehow, and it's so difficult to communicate with everybody in this entire thirty-two thousand people, we're going to have to have a huge crowd representing six magisterial districts so that they know we might make a decision to have it in their backyard. And by backyard, I mean three football fields away. It's got to be known by the community, or another Paula is gonna come forward from the citizenry. And then the medical community will get together. This is just too serious. We had a hard fought battle, three and a half, four years ago, on dead animal. And magistrate Phil Sammons and I stood above the distillery in Frankfurt, where they had a couple hundred animals. And they were just saying how wonderful it was that you could not smell the dead animals. I said, Phil, how is your old factories today? And he said, I smell dead animals. And we dodged that bullet at my great peril. And I'll look at the scientific data just like I looked at the doctor of the environmental services at the University of Kentucky. And I wrote up almost two dozen bullets out of his document. And when I gave him a copy of it, I thought I was gonna have to protect myself. Because the guy who wrote the document was furious with me. And I was not given the opportunity to submit that to the next meeting of fiscal court. But we ended up winning that battle. And we don't, we have another circumstance that could be equally concerning to our environment.
I think we all understand that it's a matter of safety and public health. So let's move on, and you set us up a date and let us know when it is.
I'm gonna go back to the thing that I think you said you were gonna work on. But if we have community there, I also want their input on the mountain bike trail system, because I want them to understand, you know, I'm saying this nicely, it's, it, just like in any group, that's, it's a nice quiet little area. I want them to understand that their life is going to be impacted by this large facility we're building out there. I wanna make sure they know, because I don't wanna have to deal with this on the back end once it gets built.
Right, and I've been letting neighbors know. I said, well, we could have dead cows, or we could have smoke, or we could have bike parks.
Sorry.
So which one? Very dramatic, Jamie, very dramatic.
I know, I didn't mean that, I didn't know it was all that... But you, you have neighbors that are gonna put a campground in there, which means that you're gonna have campfires. You're gonna have, you know, it might not be what it is at Greenup County right now, but, you know, the way that the, the groups that are on these committees are talking, you could have up to a thousand people there at one time. Is that going to be a problem?
It changes, every neighborhood changes. Do we want our neighborhood that's quiet to change? You know, it would be nice if it just stayed the same. But it's either gonna go down, or it's gonna go up. And we'd prefer it to go up. So that's what, I've talked to them, I'm still talking to them, haven't talked to all of them, telling them, this bike park's coming, it's gonna make a difference. But, you know, we do it one or two different, three different ways. And this is a good way to go.
Okay, all right. Thank you all. Thank you, Angie. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Angie.
Let us know. All right. Okay, next up, ethics vice chair Teresa Nollet. And we have a, a returning person in the audience, Joe Myers. Good to see you, and hope your recovery is, is going well.
All right, thank you.
Yes.
So we are on the agenda for some proposed changes to the ordinance, is that right?
Yes.
All right, so it's a lot to read. Hopefully you guys had a chance to read it. How do you want me to handle this? Do you want me to touch on each one? Do you wanna just ask questions?
Tell us what the changes are.
Just tell me?
Yeah, highlight the changes.
Okay. So we have ten changes plus a title change.
Okay.
The first one has to do with section twenty-two B, noncompliance with a SOFI filing. And what we're proposing is to remove the current language about fines and replace it with the language that is, they will, people who fail to file a SOFI will be identified in a finding presented in a fiscal court meeting or in a finding sent to the members of the fiscal court. Okay, so that's the first one. Do you wanna take one at a time? You want me to go through them all?
Just go through them all.
Okay. The second one is under section eighteen, went to file and amended statements. And it's really just adding language to, to clarify or to specify that that also includes municipal governments of Junction City and Perryville, that people in those positions are also required to file a SOFI. And also candidates for elected office in those municipal documents.
And that's only for paragraphs B and C?
B and C, yeah.
Under section eighteen, okay.
And you're currently collecting those from them already?
Yes. But we're trying to make it explicit in the, in the ordinance.
Have you spoken with either body of government in Perryville or Junction to...
Have not yet.
We're the first one saying this, right. Yeah.
Right, Joe? This was one that Joe had proposed. You haven't talked to the mayor yet?
No, and partly, if I may say, with this was, initially I was under the impression this was gonna be presented at the November tenth meeting. My intention when talking to Teresa is to go to Perryville's meeting Thursday. And also Junction City will not meet before the tenth, so I'm gonna talk to Mayor Douglas. But just putting this in context, about three years or so ago, I was not the chairperson when I was president. The Ethics Commission approached both bodies in open meetings and offered them the opportunity to come under our umbrella, our ethics code. And they both, all of them agreed to do so. What's happened is, with another one is, this is not, there've been some gaps, what I would say that maybe are not explicitly supposed for county. It mentioned, mentions county officials, that that's gonna come up with another one with the title. So my intention was to talk with them, or with Teresa, to talk with them and explain to them, this is really reflecting what they had agreed to verbally, and that they are under the umbrella, and that we're not treating them any differently than county employees or vice versa. So it's to promote uniformity. My concern was, we've had a different mayor now since then in Perryville. We have new council members in both places, members stay, we have new fiscal court members. And I think it's good to get this in writing now. So there's not something that's gonna come up with somebody could later challenge in this instance, say, wait a minute, I'm running Junction City. I don't have to file this within thirty days. But if you're running for a county position, you do. And that's not what I think anybody wants, we're looking for uniformity. So my intention is to try to communicate this to the others. If they wish to say, we don't wish to be part of the, under this umbrella, they're certainly, that's their prerogative. We're not, we're not trying to force anything on them, but we think that they would agree with the spirit of this. And so I would like to do that informally between now and November the tenth.
I, I, I raise the question primarily because city dables not in here.
Exactly.
Because they have their own.
Exactly. We had to specify, we didn't wanna say municipal period, because that would've led us, we don't have, but Junction City and Perryville affirmed, but we said a few years ago, they didn't wanna be under this. So we're gonna treat them just like we would county candidates, non incumbents, as well, and anybody. So they're on the same schedule.
Yeah, okay, so the reason I bring this up is I think we should have the conversation with them first, before we do any name changes, with them first before we do any name changes and give them the opportunity to say, you've got new mayors, you've got new people that, hey, we may want to have our own ethics board.
Yeah, I mean, 651003 KRS, it just talks about any city, county, or consolidated local government may enter into a memorandum of agreement or an interlocal agreement with one or more other cities, counties, consolidated local governments, which will adopt the Code of Ethics, which will apply to all elected officials. So I think that, you know, they may have said it orally, which is good. They need to actually vote on it and then adopt it and then make it. And I think that's.
I would, I would, again, I don't want to speak for you, Chris, but I think as the county attorney, and this being enacted by the fiscal court, that it would probably be helpful if your office could draft something for them. I mean, we can verbally express this to them. And I don't want to make that offer to them without consulting with you. But I think that's well taken. I think we're all on the same, our relationships with the councils, I've gone to meetings, have been positive. And if they have some concerns, there's nothing nefarious here that we're trying.
Counselor?
Each jurisdiction has its.
With what I heard from KRS 67, it would seem the more appropriate relationship would be for Parable and Junction to look at exactly what Danville has because everything you read was about municipalities rather than the court.
City, county, any city, county, or consolidated local government. They can pass their own, which is stricter than ours, or they can follow ours. And so the city of Danville passed their own, which is stricter than ours, essentially.
And it's cheaper for Junction and Parable to just be under somebody else than have to go to the trouble of doing this.
But you have an interlocal with them then?
We need to see in this. I think that's a clean way to do it, is do an interlocal agreement with them. That's what we do with other issues and.
So how does that stand now, since we don't have an interlocal with them? Is it official or no?
Well, they met and took an action in their, in their court, in their councils to agree to do this. So they have, they have gone on record saying that they consented to this. So they can also say, we don't want to do this. At this point in time, we're acting on what they, what they want us to do. We've complied and.
If they do, they just need to finalize it with an interlocal agreement. They've agreed, but.
They've agreed, but an interlocal agreement hasn't been filed for several years. So.
Let's just clean it up. They just need a new vote and then.
And again, to go back to my original question is, have, we should probably go back there and talk to them and say, hey, we now, now need you to sign something that somebody else agreed to.
I agree.
Yeah.
I agree. We can work.
I would hold off on that title change until we get that all cleaned up.
Thank you. The third one is a proposed change also to Section 18. We want to add paragraph F to describe a requirement for leavers. That means a SOFI filer who departs their position or office. That they need to file the SOFI the January after they leave office because that SOFI covers the time period when they were in office. Okay? The next one is Section 19, the form of the statement of financial interest. And this is because we're moving to an online form. The current language talks about delivering the form by first-class mail or hand delivery. And what we want to do is email a link to the form for people for whom we have emails. And if we don't have an email, then they will get a letter with a paper form or hand-delivered paper form. The fifth one is a change to Section 20. And this allows for electronic storage of the data. It's, it's an added paragraph that has been reviewed with Bill Nichols. And he's in agreement. Basically says the data would be retained in a secure, limited access storage location, but available to the Ethics Commission. Okay. Number six is proposed change to Section 21, Paragraph C. The current ordinance asks for the occupation of the filer and his or her spouse. We would like to say the occupation and position. So I'm a doctor and I'm a chief of surgery at E. from McDowell. That's the type of information we think we would like to have.
Why?
Why? Because position gives us more information in terms of their, what they're in control over and could lead to information about conflicts of interest.
And I guess this example is in my own personal experience, while I am actually back on a very part-time basis working at Center College now, in my full-time capacity as Center College athletic trainer, it's not like I was Center College assistant to the president or, or chief financial officer or something that had a more influential role. You know, I take care of athletes' injuries and don't have any, necessarily any influence on the direction of the college in my role as athletic trainer at Center College.
My main ask is that we have a hard time filling board seats. And that's why we've, over the last several years, we've asked to have changes to the filing form and understanding of it. And so a lot of people want to, you know, fill these seats without feeling like, you know, we're getting too deep into their personal information. And I understand the reason behind it. But so, you know, whenever we're doing these things, we have to look at both sides. Like, okay, I understand why we want information, but also do we really want, how is our board, you know, people going to feel filling this information now? That's kind of, we need to look at both sides of this.
That's why we're proposing it and you can decide. Okay. Section 26, alternate members. We're adding a phrase, I think this was Magistrate Ellis's suggestion, just specifying that alternate, the alternate member include, including voting on any and all matters when needed, that that's, they're included in their duties. They can vote on matters.
Magistrate, I want to make a comment. That was your suggestion and we incorporated that.
Yeah, thank you.
The eighth one, change to Section 30, procedures for filing complaints require that complaints be limited to a single complainant and a single respondent. And it's, it's really just clarifying it because for us to deal with, if, if a complaint comes in with multiple people being complained about, it's really hard to manage. And because we're sending information out and getting responses back. So this is just being very specific about how we want to receive complaints. Section nine and 10, nine is receipt of gifts, 10 is honoraria. And this is another one that is making explicit that it applies to municipal officers and employees of Junction City and Parable and any of their municipal agencies as well as to county government officers and employees. So those are the 10. And then the last one was the title change, which is proposed to add to the title and in the municipal governments of Junction City, Kentucky and Parable, Kentucky. So, but I think point well taken that we need to review with those bodies and get the official agreement.
I think there's a couple of things that I made some, Chris and I talked.
That was actually my question. Is, have you guys gone over this with?
Fair. I mean, I just got this Friday. I wouldn't hear Friday, so I got it Monday. But we had talked about distinguishing between employees and elected officials and volunteers and how we handle penalties and fines. So we need to explore that. We talked about that. We need a clause in here that talks about retaining the records, where the records are, who's got custody of the records. We haven't talked about that. And then there's a section about all employees of Junction City and Parable. It's in one of the languages. And I would like to clarify what, because we don't make all of our employees fill out a SOFI. So I'd like to see what the thought process was on that. So Chris and I can look at that. And then we'll put it in ordinance form and redline it and let you all look at it in the ordinance form as a first reading, probably mid-November, late November, if we work through all this and get the interlocal agreements and all that. That would be my recommendation.
Let's make the next meeting, any changes to look at, and then we'll make our last meeting in November for first reading.
Because it might take a month to get the interlocals to Junction and Parable, get all the agenda. It might be December.
Will we be okay to do the online SOFI?
I think so. I think we could even pass a motion to go ahead and proceed with that to make it electronic. You could go ahead and do that, don't you think?
So we're, we're working with Bill and the vendor. And it's coming on, looking good. And we should be able to get a link to you all to test, certainly within the next month, but hopefully.
I really like the online SOFI. And I mean, if we get emails, if we're just going to send it out by email, I think that something should be added in there that says, we're a red receipt, something like that. Because sometimes people say, I emailed this to you. And I'm like, yeah, I had that email like 10 years ago. You know, I never got it. So a red receipt, I think would be important.
And I think we need to make sure that each year, and I don't know if we handled this on the SOFI or what do we do, but we, we make an email address a required field. So that way.
It actually.
Is.
I think it is. And we can make it. And that, but you know, if they don't have one, I don't know. I guess.
Well, they won't be reading the email to fill it out.
But I mean, what if somebody needs to do one and doesn't have an email? They would have to do it by paper. So they would have to come to us and say, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, you all have a workaround.
But it, but it is, it is a required field.
Yeah, okay.
Yes, yes.
So I want to make sure you all have time to look over this and read it and come back with any other suggestions that you may have at the next meeting. And then the last meeting in November, we will put it on the agenda for first reading. Or if the Ethics Committee needs to come back at the next meeting and any more changes.
Make a motion that we proceed with making the electronic version.
The SOFI, okay.
SOFI available.
All right. I have a motion by Magistrate Gay, second by Magistrate Fallon. Any discussion?
Just a question. So this can be done without any additional purchasing of any?
We already purchased.
We already did.
All right. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Any opposed aye? Motion carries.
Is that under Bill's software purchase, I think it was? Did he purchase something with?
It was with Civic Plus. It was a module.
This is going to allow us to put a lot of forms online and fill out a lot of different firsts.
Primarily.
Jake, I have a question.
Yes.
I should not talk to Teresa about that. She is right now the acting chairperson of the Ethics Commission. I'm a member. I tries to help. I hope I don't.
Yes.
I would like to ask if it's okay for the fiscal court for me to advise Junction City mayors, Junction City and Parable mayors, that their council could, can be, get in touch with Chris. Because I think some of these things, they're, they're going to probably want their lawyers to look over them.
Yeah.
My experience from memory, which is not always the best, but is that December is not always a regular meeting.
Right.
They're going to have their meetings coming up in November. So if we don't get it done in December, then you're talking about January. We're going to be right in the middle of the SOFI season at that point in time. So Chris, I don't want to overextend you, but I think this might be a situation where you as the attorney for the county and their attorneys for their, maybe you could get something, something together that could be satisfy the fiscal court as far as that we're acting within our jurisdictions. We are under fiscal court jurisdictions. So I don't know if you can assist in that regard or not. You know, you probably know both the councils, but I can give you their information as well.
Right. I mean, I can reach out to Jordan.
John Hackley is for, John is so, but I would, I think they're going to probably want to be involved. They should be involved in something like this, obviously. And that's going to be, you're speaking for the county. I'm just speaking for the Ethics Commission, but the legal documents are really, that's going to be your all's bailiwick, as I see it.
Okay. And Theresa, you've got one more?
Got one more, yes. We have a complaint. Actually, we have several complaints, but one, we've had since September. And our county attorney's office is not able to help us. And so we were advised to speak with Maury Curran's in Harrisburg. And we have a proposal engagement letter from her that we would like to get her help. We need her help. And we need fiscal court to approve that.
I'll make that motion.
Okay. I have a motion by Magistrate Gay, second by Magistrate Bodner. Any discussion?
Like what, what kind of help? And I know that my office can assist, but I mean, there are conflicts, you know, from time to time that arise that, that you have to seek outside counsel. Like exactly what kind of help are you needing from her?
The first help that I was hoping to get was help identifying what are the, the sections in the code that are applicable to the complaint, if any. I would like her input on whether the complaint is within our jurisdiction, that kind of thing. And some advice on how to proceed.
She, man, she, Ms. Curran's is a very, Ms. Curran's is, which I just mentioned, she's a very experienced attorney in, in this area. She knows ethics or other sources. Some of the things, and I don't want to get particular about this complaint, but there are some things that are raised and that I think are areas that may be weighed in terms of their, whether they would actually fall rise to a level of something that would need a hearing or perhaps maybe something could be resolved elsewhere. These are types of issues that I think her experience would be very helpful to us to look at. We will make the final decision on, before we would say, we don't think this has merit, that would be a vote of the Ethics Commission. It's determined whether to go forward with an evidentiary hearing. But she can give us some preliminary advice. And she's been, I found, I don't know, Teresa, she's been, with her experience, I think the type of cases, she's extremely good. She has no interest in, unlike your office, we should note, has conflict with this, with this particular case. Jenny was not able to do this. Nobody in your office, I understand, could do this particular complaint. So we do need someone outside. She's in Harrisburg. I think she's an ideal candidate to give us feedback. If we determine we would like to use for more than that, I think we would feel like we'd need to come back to you all and ask for additional funding. Can I say that?
Yeah. And, and we have another set of complaints that we just received. And we will, I think, need help from your office. Or if not, we will need to engage another attorney. So I mean, we do need support with these.
As a magistrate of nearly seven years, this is the first time that this has come up to my knowledge, guys. When do we, counselor, appropriately know what's going on? All of a sudden I hear that we have a series of complaints and I have zero knowledge of it. So I don't know how to act on this.
Well, I think you find out about it when the Ethics Commission hears and does their due diligence and then they'll bring their recommendation.
Because the complaint goes to the Ethics Commission, not to us.
Yeah, we're working through it. Yeah.
They have to report to us.
If it, if it pertains to a county employee or elected official, you would get it when they have done their due diligence. They make a decision of what they think needs to happen. Then they bring it to fiscal court. And you make, you don't know about it because you need to make an impartial decision at the end. So bringing you information might possibly taint your decision. That's why we have that.
Just that it's a brand new, seven years, not, not happened.
I just don't want to see us turning over everything for somebody else to make a decision on whether, how this, how this decision is made because that's what we have the Ethics Commission for, our local citizens. So I just want to be careful that we're not having an attorney doing the work that our local citizens were appointed to. That would be my only concern.
So you're saying there could be a stopgap in between getting an attorney?
Right. I mean, I think that even for me, every time that there's an ethics complaint, I, I don't think that the Ethics Commission should just come talk to me about it. I think that, you know, any attorney, that's kind of like the last resort. If they have some, if some legal question comes up, then yes, they should ask me or if it's a conflict, ask another attorney. But I'm unsure if, like, they just bring it to me, do you think this is an ethics conflict? I think that, that, that kind of makes me part of that board at, at some, at some point, which they've been appointed to do. So I just want to be careful there that what involvement an attorney would be.
Have, have all the members of the commission discussed bringing this forward? These forward?
We talked about it in our meeting, but I think we had already met with Ms. Curran's the first time before because we were trying to get help right away when it came in.
And you have so many days to reply, so.
I actually ended up replying before we had help.
We didn't have a quorum. We did not, and one of our members, one of the particulars, could not participate in this case because of a.
Conflict.
Yeah. So in a sense, if you remember when we got a budget, there was money for equipment and also for council. And.
Well, and the ordinance specifies that we are entitled to counsel.
Mr. Heron indicated that we could use one of his assistants. My feeling is, if we have questions that we would want a lawyer to look at, that that's who we would go to, that it shouldn't necessarily involve a detailed things, but we want to run, here's something we're wrestling with, or we have a question with, that's what we want to use counsel for. In this particular case, we were given, because that, their counsel was not able to participate because of a conflict, we were given, their office gave us Ms. Curran's, and that's who we went to. And so, that's, we kind of worked from that point of view to comply with the time limits that we're dealing with. So, if we had not followed those, then there could have been a complaint against us, and it would have looked like we were perhaps a bigger problem than there is. So, we're trying to keep this on a, on a level playing field for everybody, so there doesn't look like there's any favoritism. So, that's where we're at. We were given that name, and that's where we went to and talked to her, and now we're coming back to you. She told us she had not received any type of a contract or anything, and we didn't want to exploit her either, but we just felt like, well, now we need to get this resolved because she's, she's helping us in a suggestion or the direction of the county attorney's office. That's where we're at.
She's going to be sending the mail.
Yeah, I'll call for the question. I'll call for the question. I just, I think, hopefully, your concerns have been answered and alleviated, but I do think that our ethics board needs to have, on certain issues, they need to have the ability to hire counsel.
I mean, definitely.
Yeah, and so, I think this is one of those times, and if we need to have a, you know, obviously, the counsel needs a contractual relationship with them as well, so that's why I would continue with my.
Am I missing it? I don't see a top-end expenditure that we would limit this.
It's an hourly rate.
All right, no better. That's easy.
Well, I think we have money in the budget. We have fifteen hundred, I think, fifteen, seventeen hundred, something like that in the budget. So, there is money for legal counsel, so that's covered.
Limit.
Yeah.
Well, no, and we probably need some type of a contract with her.
Yeah, which is what.
Not to exceed.
Thank you.
That's what this, this is establishing.
Yeah, this is her letter to the Ethics Commission. Yeah, so, we, we need to get a contract with her, and then establish a not-to-exceed amount.
That's where I'm going with it.
Well, I mean, I just would, I don't know, that's hard to do, though.
Twenty-seven fifty.
Well, not to exceed unless proved by fiscal court.
Okay, yeah, you can do something like that.
I like that. Yeah.
But they need, they need to go ahead and get, I think we're under some time constraints, right?
Well, you want to talk to that, Teresa, you?
We're moving the case along, according to the timeline, because we had to.
Yeah.
Okay? Without benefit of counsel. I would feel a lot better running this complaint after having some more legal advice from the counsel. If we're not asking her to decide the case, we're asking for advice and inputs. So.
I reviewed her contract. I don't want to get too involved.
Well, this is not a contract. This is just a letter explaining what she's going to do and how much she's going to charge.
Do a generic container agreement or something like that.
Okay.
And that, I mean, that's what that is.
Yeah, this is, the way I'm reading this is, this effectively becomes the contract.
I mean, I was just thinking, let Ms. Curran's know, this is a case-by-case basis, if you exceed X number of hours, you, before you exceed so many hours, you need to, there has to be approval first or something.
Thank you.
Yeah, this is only for this matter. This agreement is only for the one matter that we met her about.
Okay, so, have you all signed?
No.
Okay.
I was told not to sign it. I was told it had to come to fiscal court.
Okay, all right. Just catching up.
So, the maximum number of hours on this case, right now with our budget, is 11 hours.
So, I can tell her not to exceed 11 hours?
Unless you come back and add for additional funding. And court proof.
Yeah, I don't think that our committee should be engaging in contracts, which is why I asked them to hold off and bring it to you. I felt like you needed to approve the judge to sign the contract.
Absolutely.
So, if that's incorrect, please tell me.
No, I mean, I think it's a proper procedure to do.
So, can we, can we write something on there, not to exceed, and have the judge sign it?
Yes. Yes.
Okay.
All right, so, we have a motion and a second on the floor to approve this letter of engagement. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Motion carries. We'll get that done.
Thank you.
Thank you, Teresa. All right, Shannon, you're up with the September settlement.
In your packets, I have the September Treasurers Monthly Settlement.
Yay.
I also have the financial statement that was sent to D L G. Middle of September.
Again, yay.
Yay.
You're spoiling this with all this timely stuff.
I tried.
So, settlement acknowledged.
Settlement acknowledged.
Okay.
Quarterly report, sent to D L G. I think that just needs to be acknowledged.
Acknowledged as well, yep. Any questions for Shannon on the monthly settlement or the quarterly report?
Are you going to assess the audits as well?
Yeah. We did receive our final audit reviews. I just gave you each copies of those in your box or mail.
For twenty-three and twenty-four.
For twenty-three and twenty-four. Twenty-three, I believe, had three findings on it, but we have already addressed those and got those corrected.
Yeah.
Twenty-four had one finding, and we've already addressed that.
And we are now currently being audited for twenty-twenty-five. So, we're caught up, and we know that twenty-twenty-five is going to provide a good, clean audit. So, we're looking forward to that. All right, any questions for Shannon? Comments?
All right, thank you.
Appreciate it. All right, Julie went to do something, I'm not sure.
Just want to talk about pickleball courts.
I'm coming.
I'm sorry. Teresa, I'm going to get you a contract.
All right, you're up, Julie, you're talking about pickleball courts.
I received a contract from Rob Deal for pickleball with a fee of seven percent of the total construction cost. I'd like to make a recommendation that we table this till the next meeting, so that we can meet with the pickleballers and kind of talk about it. So, with your permission, we'll table this, meet with the pickleballers, and come back on the 10th with our final kind of recommendation.
Okay, is there a motion to?
Motion.
Magistrate Bowden, second by magistrate Sleeper. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed, nay? Motion carries. That will be tabled into our next meeting.
Well, I guess I, those happen, but why do we need to meet with them to?
There are some, I received some preliminary cost estimates. There's some things, I don't understand what they are, so I'd like to meet with them. I'd like to see what kind of fundraising they're going to do, because they've talked about, they are, they are either just becoming a nonprofit or in the process, and I'd like to see about the city, which is what they was putting before we turn our numbers out, and I just feel like we got a little more behind-the-scenes meetings and advice from the pickleballers. We're not delaying, and I just want to make sure we get it right.
Okay, we are ready for magistrate reports, and we will start with magistrate Harmon. Did that?
Went to the jailers conference, reading, I wasn't here to the last meeting, and some very intense training, some of the best that I've been to in nineteen years.
Wow.
It was fairly good. Our jailer should be a lot smarter than his chief deputy. And I think Brian has had surgery, not Brian, but Chad had surgery this week.
Yes.
We need to remember him.
Yeah.
But it was excellent training, top-quality people from all over the nation. Been to a lot, a lot of training in nineteen years, and this was one of the best weeks.
Great.
Well invested.
Glad you got your ten.
Every magistrate needs to go.
I hear that.
You don't learn all about the jail in ten years.
Right.
You think you know, but you don't. I'm working on nineteen, Jamie. I found out a lot, I don't know now.
Well, that's awesome.
But it was good.
All right, thank you. magistrate Cullen?
Okay, well, we got nothing.
What?
Nothing.
Okay. magistrate Gay?
Yes, the finance committee met on October 20th, myself, magistrate Cullen, Shannon, and I was trying to think of who else was there that day.
I waved.
You waved?
I stopped in the door and waved.
That's right, okay. So, we reviewed a lot of the stuff we've talked about today. We reviewed the audits from fiscal year twenty-three and twenty-four, and we also reviewed the first quarter financial report, the Cheryl Morgan helped dental insurance, stopgap insurance plans that were presented today, the dental adjustment and all those things that we approved today, we reviewed all those in that meeting. And then, we also, which, I don't know if Shannon's had a chance to work on this any or not, but we're wanting to look at our bank interest rate charges and possibly shop that around a little bit, but, so hopefully, she'll get some information for us on that in the future, so we're going to kind of shop our, we suggested or recommended that we shop our bank interest rates around. And so, that's the finance committee report, and I'll make that motion and pass that stuff over.
Okay, we have a motion by magistrate Gay, is her second?
Second.
magistrate Cullen, all those in favor approving the financial report, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Motion carries.
And then, also, want to echo what Jack said earlier about the Veterans Appreciation Day, November 7th, and unfortunately, I'm going to be out of town for that event, which I hate to miss, it'll be the first one I miss, and will also be out of town for our next meeting on the 10th, so I hate that, but I'm sure you all can carry on. So, I'll be gone and catch up with everybody at CAECO. And then, also, want to say that I had the chance to go to the unveiling of the new public art statue on Center's campus, which, if you haven't had a chance to go up and see it, I would highly recommend that you do. It's of, it's a statue of Boyle Countyan, Justice John Marshall Harlan, who is the class of eighteen fifty at Center College, and a contemporary of Henry Clay, Abraham Lincoln, and known as the great dissenter. And he was the lone dissenter in Plessy versus Ferguson, that really, his dissent became instrumental in what later became law in Brown versus Board of Education. And so, he was on several issues, a lone dissenter that also became law. He was a colonel in the Union Army, and was also very instrumental, along with Henry Clay, in Kentucky remaining neutral during the Civil War. So, just fascinating story. It's really a well-done piece of art there on Center's campus, the whole area is. And just to point out, one of the things that I learned during that, that event, was you'll see the stones, the limestone stones falling behind Justice Harlan, and those are symbolic of the wall of segregation falling. And then, they fall into a limestone path, and the idea is that it's, it falls into the path that has not always been easy and to take. And so, it's really a well-done, it was, a Center alum was also, was the landscape architect that designed the space. So, I got to hear him present, as well as Judge Beaton, Ben Beaton, who was instrumental in kind of a driving force behind that, getting that project, getting done. So, it's really, you need to, if you haven't had a chance, stop up and, and visit that space. That's all I have.
Thank you, magistrate Gay. magistrate Sleeper?
I just have one item, Economic Development Authority met on October 20th, still continuing with our master planning on the renting property that we've acquired. And one of the things we looked at is, like, farm leases, because they have this land, otherwise, we have to keep mowing it, but we've got farmers who want to lease it for crops, and so, that's a better, better benefit to us, get some income out of it, plus keep it looking better until it is actually sold or whatever. Also, we've had some fence line cleanups, but the city has been taking care of that for us, so, taking care of that. And that's, I can't think of anything else really that's significant at this point, so.
Okay, thank you. magistrate Ellis?
Thank you, Judge. Who among us was aware that there was going to be a planning and zoning vote last week on moving, allowing one acre for a home, and they moved it by their motion and vote to five acres? Who was aware of that?
Ellis was on the agenda. I read the agenda.
But the agenda did not say that they would vote.
It's part of the complaint.
It's part of the complaint, too.
I have not since Dead Animal been inundated with more severe negative feedback than with this, and you're going to have to bear with me. I called Director Gray and had a very professional conversation with her, but something of that consequence has such a financial impact on already difficult times for our farmers. And I'll remind you that as tiny a county as we are, seventh or eighth in geographic size, we are among the top ten cattle producers east of the Mississippi River. And now, new sanctions and tariffs are being imposed that are making their financial circumstance potentially very difficult over the next couple of years. I had a call from a major real estate broker who was told that it was on the agenda, but there would not be a vote. And by the way, with all due respect to the newspaper and our radio stations and other communications that go on in the, in the community, none of the people who contacted me were aware of this potential vote at all, adding to their consternation and the calls that I'm getting. A gentleman sat right here in this very seat a couple of years ago and spoke to owner We have many families in this community who have two, three, four, and five children and own big farms. This would negate their ability to give, with five kids, five one-acre tracts to build a home. I spoke with magistrates and real estate folks from, representing Garrett, Lincoln, and Washington County. I don't even want to tell you what one of those gentlemen said about. about this court if we were to ratify that. But he just, I'll say that he said it was crazy. In Washington County, they have, and by the way, an acre is, I think, 43,000 feet in square feet and change. Their ordinance is 100-foot frontage and 32,000 square feet. So basically, half an acre. With an appropriate working lateral field. I want Brent to be here because I know all about having an appropriate lateral field. I've been through that issue. These farmers are calling far beyond their children's circumstances to give them an acre. But they're talking about the ability that they have right now to pull off one acre and get some cash flow during hard times. And many farmers will tell you that they're glad to have a profit two or three out of 10 years. So we are further putting them in the circumstance where we to ratify this. And by the way, statute allows us to negate it, to have it rescinded. Right now, you cannot find, at least I could not find, one acre for less than 30,000. So very few people will take that, times five, $150,000 to build a home. And we had Rusty in here last week who confirmed what I already knew, that to build a square footage house of 1,500 square feet, just that cost alone comes to $375,000. You add the land cost to it, and all of a sudden, a home big enough for maybe mom, dad, and one, possibly two children, 1,500 square feet. And nobody's building a net smaller anymore. That's a $525,000 home. How many people you know have the money right now to build a $350,000? A 1,500-square-foot home, more than a half million dollars. I didn't know anybody growing up who lived in a $50,000 house. The taxes and the insurance on a $525,000 home, since I didn't have a whole lot of time to do a lot of research on this, I've given you some, is so prohibitive, I certainly, in retirement, couldn't afford that. Why would we stifle growth in our county by imposing a minimum of a half million dollars for somebody to build something that's just twice the size of what's now defined as a tiny home? And why would we take away the rights, as said by Magistrate Salmon here, when we had a similar argument about four years ago? I cannot fathom that we weren't contacted. I cannot fathom that a very major real estate broker called to find out and was told, well, yes, it's on the agenda, but you have no worry because there will not be a vote. And they took a vote. Folks, I won't do it today. But this will be on the agenda next time, Judge, if I have the authority to request that.
It's going to be on the last meeting in November.
Yeah, okay. But you can plan on me having a lot of research, and we'll be here for a long, long time if there is the slightest possibility that this would pass. I will say that the gentleman from another county, who is a huge real estate broker, beyond crazy, he said, what, has Boyle County become a communistic county that would take away citizens' rights on land that might have been in their family for generations? It's just outrageous that it wasn't brought to us before they considered a vote.
Were you in part of the comp plan? Because this all came from the comp plan.
Yeah, it came from the comp plan.
I don't care.
That's why we do a comprehensive plan.
I guess that is the communist coming out. I mean, the public was the one that said they wanted this.
No, the public didn't. The public wasn't involved in that comp plan at all.
Yeah, they were. They went to the meetings.
It was like a yearly process, a year-long, more than a year-long process.
I went to every meeting.
And you know that in Parksville, if you were in part of Parksville Water District, you can't get tied onto their water because they're out of pressure?
I understand that more than you could understand it because those are my constituents calling me.
I just.
Folks, this just cannot, cannot go forward with the high cost of living that families in Boyle County have today.
Let me just chime in here a little bit. I'm sorry. So, yeah, we have this planning and zoning and comprehensive planning process that is an important part of our community. And it sets the standard for what our community wants to be moving forward. And so it is a year-long process, and this has been part of that process.
For consideration.
Planning and zoning, I strongly believe, is something that keeps our community, makes our community great.
And I have seen at least three iterations of that in the last seven years as it has evolved and changed. Just like we have seen an EDP on which board I sat, I tried to pull off of it. You voted me back on that board. And we have now made drastic improvements on that whole process with two members of this court sitting on it. So things change when you come to a realization of what the impact would be to a family, some of whom have called me, have lived here seven, eight generations. So this is something that must be reconsidered.
What is reconsidered? They come to us for a vote on it. That's the whole part of planning and zoning.
And that's why I'm.
That's what she just said. They're going to come to us.
And if it doesn't get enough significant play in the newspaper and on our radio stations, be assured that I'm going to write a letter to the editor with my details. And I will, notwithstanding planning processes, which change each year.
Obviously, you didn't listen to Hannah when she, because Hannah would tell you that there is still an option for a one-acre lot.
Right. Farms, family farms can still do that.
Yes, they can. There are still options for that.
You do a zoning amendment.
You do a zoning amendment.
With a zoning amendment after the fact, when we've already burned down the barn.
Neil Road is your prime example.
Let me just finish some of my thoughts here, please.
Master Gay?
So and part of the process is there's always going to be this give and take and this balance between property owners' rights and the best interest of the community. That's part of the whole planning and zoning process. I mean, an example of it that you've been very involved in, and I've always, I've been with you on this, like, is solar farms. I mean, there's lots of our farmers that would like the ability to utilize their farmland for solar farms. Where we, as a community, have decided that that's not something that we're interested in exploring. So these are all things that get discussed in the process of the best for the community good. In lot sizes, it comes down to infrastructure. What's the best use of our land overall for the community? How do we locate our development within the community? These are all things that get discussed through the comprehensive planning process. And this has not happened in some kind of crazy vacuum, the way you're describing it. These things are all, you know, yes, I know that getting information out there about public meetings and those kind of things is more difficult in today's world, depending on where you get your information from. But these have all been appropriately and properly advertised, and this discussion has been had.
You even got mad because you thought they weren't having meetings in Perryville, which they did. You yourself said, are they having this comprehensive plan meeting in Perryville? And they did have it there. But you have to figure out, and this is why we have these discussions, but you have to figure out, if we don't have the infrastructure, the water, the internet, the road width, Neil Road, Goggin, even Goggin, which is, you know, partly in the city, Water Works, all these small roads persimmon now, where you've got expanding growth and people have expectations of, okay, well, now we've got all this traffic on these roads, so I need a wider road. Or why are my roads deteriorating faster than they did before? Because you've got this increased growth out there. And what normally happens is when somebody comes in and they plot, like Hunt Farm, they plotted a development out there. And so the developer had to go in and put the road in. They had to make improvements. They had to put the electricity, the sewer.
I have no problem with that.
Yeah. And those are all the things that are being missed by a lot of these little micro developments that are coming up because, you know, somebody buys piece of property, one acre, and then they build on it. And then at that point, it becomes the county's responsibility to improve the roads, to improve the sewer, to improve the electricity, the internet, you know. And yeah, we are all for property owners' rights. But at what point do we have to look and say, if we keep going down this road, we're going to have to raise taxes? And that affects everybody because we don't have the money to keep putting all these services out there without raising taxes. And again, we're above the 30,000 threshold. So if we raise taxes, I guess this is an example of somebody else because they've called me, too. And this is why we need to, before we do anything, we need to get a group of people together and possibly have this larger conversation. But if we have to raise taxes by, say, $2 million, how much of a cut of that does Danville get? Which means we have to raise it by like twice that. And nobody wants to raise taxes. So this is how you kind of get an idea of how we can shape this growth without, you know, burdening everybody.
The last data that I saw, and it's well over 18 months ago, is two things. Over 67% of our workforce comes from outside this county. And we are over 800 employees short. And yet, we, out of one side of our discussions, will say, gee, we really want you to come and come here and stay. And a point that I emphasize with young people all the time is, oh, you're graduating from Danville High School. Oh, you're graduating from Boyle County High School. It was part of my theme last meeting when we had the two coaches here, because I've talked to each of them privately about this. Encourage your young men and women to stay in this county.
Good. We've got seven neighborhoods being developed right now.
I understand that. I understand that. But to slow what can happen in my district and everyone else's districts by putting a minimum, oh, yes, you can go ahead and give an acre to your child. But to impose restrictions that would drive their costs up so prohibitive that it just can't be done?
How's it driving the price up? I don't get that. You keep making this point. It's not driving up the price. They can still give somebody a lot. The only thing they have to do is go get it re-zoned.
Within their family?
No, not necessarily within the family.
But with ordinance changes or?
You just have to get it re-zoned. It's a zone change.
So here's the beauty of all this. Planning and zoning does what they do. Then they have to bring it to the fiscal court. And the fiscal court has to either approve it or deny it and ask them to go back and redo it. The city has to do the same thing. The main thing we need to do between now and the last meeting in November is listen to the constituents. So everybody that calls.
But we have to be educated as well.
We do.
You can't sit here and have a conversation with somebody if you don't know all the facts.
That's right.
So, I mean, Hannah, while she is new, she is very good at what she does. I would listen more than talk. I would talk to some of the other planning and zoning board members to get their thoughts on it, too. And make sure everybody's educated and then have the conversation. Because a couple of conversations I've had, when I've kind of told people like, no, this is what's going on. This is what's happening. They're like, okay, well, that's completely different than how it came across, you know, on.
Eddie, but Hannah said that the information did not go out exactly as it should have.
Right.
And we have very respectful conversation. And what I would encourage is just as we as a body need to get deeply into the burner situation with total public, I'm looking at something like the showroom. I don't know whether we have to pay for that when we do it or what. But I'm looking at a packed showroom on the burner. And I'm looking separately with Hannah, making an excellent presentation to the public. A packed showroom on any kind of an idea.
You're going to force people to come?
To impose five acres.
You're forcing people to come before we can make a decision? Is that what you're trying to say?
I'm inviting the public to understand exactly all the details.
For a year and a half?
That you're helping me to understand that I don't understand.
But I'm saying, we invited them for a year, a year and a half on the comp plan.
You know, there are things that all of a sudden just hit you, like stepping on a rake in tall grass and the handle just hits you right between the eyes. I think this discussion today and the inundation of input that I've gotten from people in my district tells me that there are folks in your district, too, who are totally blindsided by the fact, and I'm seeing some audience nodding, that we need to have one more major. And I'll, believe me, I will get the word out to people. And if need be, but I have every confidence that the newspaper and the radio stations, if they tuned in today, will do an excellent job on this to make an awareness out to the community so that we can all understand some of the facts that you've brought up that I'm not aware of, so that we can do the appropriate thing and have variances and opportunities for people to have the rights to deal with their property.
And Hannah will be doing that on the 25th?
A big one?
Well, she'll come to fiscal court and she will explain on that.
But I'm talking about having something.
Well, that's up to planning and zoning.
I think we should have the right to ask the planning and zoning to have a major public hearing.
Well, we can ask them.
Okay.
But it's up to them whether they do it or not.
But I would also encourage that people that you're speaking to and anybody else that has questions to reach out to the planning and zoning office and speak to her.
It's now on record, so hopefully that'll be in the article.
She's, I know she's spoken to several people that, and that's where she corrected the residential option on there. And they were like, oh, I didn't realize that.
So I know we're short on space, but the public is welcome to come on the 25th. They're also welcome to turn, you know, tune into the Zoom link and listen.
But they're also welcome to contact your magistrate.
And before that, yes, absolutely. Absolutely.
DMC meetings are recorded, so you can see it anytime.
Yes, they are.
All yours, yeah.
All right. Any other comments?
Thank you. I'm done.
Okay. Master Bohnner?
Johnson City trick-or-treat is Friday night from 5:30 till 7:00. And everybody come out and enjoy a good time. And I've always heard, when you're really, really mad and upset about something, don't talk about it. Just wait and let some time go over it. So I'm going to do that with one issue, and I'm not going to mention it right now, but I'm really upset. So I just let it go at that. That's all I have.
Thank you. And Julie, thank you for your computer. All right. Our county attorney is out. So Julie, I guess it's up to you.
I have a couple of things. The city last night took action on the first contract on skate park at 50,000, hoping that you would go in half on that. We do have the money. So I told Josh I would go ahead and put that forth to you to go ahead and commit half of the skate park initial contract at 50,000.
Do you want any action taken, please?
I have a motion.
I have a motion by Master Gay, a second by Master Cullen. Any discussion? All right. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed nay? Motion carried.
We are working on Craig Kane. We're trying to get this project moving forward. The architect, JRA Engineering and Architecture firm, has been working on the plants. They've determined that the roof has to have a structural engineer come in and assess it. It's too much weight on the building to not bring in somebody. So it's going to cost us $5,000 to have the IZER engineering come in and assess the roof to make sure that it can hold. It's two pounds, it's two pounds per square foot. And it's a 45,000-square-foot building. And they just want to be sure that. And they just want to be sure that the building can sustain that weight, the additional weight. So that is supposed to take place this week until we get a roof plan approved, an HVAC plan approved, a sprinkler plan approved. No work can take place in those warehouses. We've been waiting and waiting and waiting, and everything sort of started yesterday. So hopefully at the next meeting, we'll have a roof plan submitted to Frankfurt. Let's see how long it takes them to approve it.
Hopefully not 30 days.
Hopefully not. We have an intern, her name is Shreya, and she's from Center College. She is helping me go through the old journal ledgers and build a financial history so we can start to analyze with Shannon where we're headed, how much of our expenses grown, and I'm thrilled to have her. She's a finance and economics major, so this is going to be really good for her. So she's coming in three afternoons a week. I think I've completed all the open records requests that we've had, the big ones. I'm good about those. The bike trail, the next meeting is the 17th of November.
That will be here.
Yeah, it's going to be here. We've sort of started calling it the Pine Mountain Bike Trail.
Pine Knob.
Pine Knob.
Pine Knob, sorry. Bike Trail, because that's what it's called on the topo maps. So that's kind of decided, doesn't mean that's going to be the final name, but you all will decide the final name, the elected officials. But for now, because we were calling it the Bike Park and we learned that that's not appropriate, it is now going to be called the Pine Knob Bike Trail for now.
Good name.
I think that's all I have.
Okay. Thank you very much. Okay. Some of you all have mentioned November 7th is the Veterans Lunch at the Armory from 11 to 2:00. November the 8th, which will be Saturday, is the Literacy Bell Event, and that will be at Constitution Square. Come and watch the kids that achieve the reading program ring the bell that they can, that they have achieved that. So that's a fun event if you can come out to that. November 10th, just a reminder, that is our next fiscal court meeting, and that will be on a Monday because we are closed on the 11th for Veterans Day. So just a reminder that that will be a special call meeting because we changed the day, so only what's on the agenda will be what will be discussed. Also, following that meeting, at 12:00 noon, we will have a Hall of Fame monument dedication out here at the Veterans Memorial. There'll be some people coming in, special guests for that. We will have a 21-gun salute at the end of that, so everybody plan to attend. We'll have a reception in the fiscal courtroom following the dedication and cake and some hot cider or something like that for, so we invite, you know, all the veterans, any veterans that want to attend, to come out and be here for that dedication. Also, Maestra Gay requested that we adjourn in memory of Bruce Leroux-Helm, who passed away in Parryville. Bruce did a lot of things for the community and was auctioneer in real estate and...
One of the finest Christians you'd ever meet.
Very, very nice. Very nice man and very nice family. So we want to remember Bruce's family. And then also Herb McGuire.
Herbie McGuire.
Okay.
Passed away, and yeah, Bruce, just a great man and entrepreneur, giving person to the whole county and community and always was willing to step up when somebody was in need. But Herbie came to Center as a student athlete in 1953 and basically never left. He was a longtime coach at Center, head coach of football, baseball, men's and women's track and field, and men's and women's golf over the time. And he actually started the women's golf program at Center and the women's cross-country program at Center and just through that long, he was really one of the legends of Center College and just was a very instrument on a lot of people's lives and was a great golfer and athlete in his own right. He's in the Center Hall of Fame and the Northern Kentucky Hall of Fame. And so both those two are big losses for...
Well, that helped me remember Bruce's daughter Rebecca served on our ethics committee.
She was our chairperson.
She was chair, and then she was the alternate.
Alternate.
Alternate. And Bruce also was very supportive of the investment in U-Sale. I don't think he missed a sale. He was even at, even at this year's sale. He was there. Yeah. All right, so do we have a motion?
I'll just move that we close in both of their memories.
All right. Maestra Gay made the motions, her second. Maestra Bodnar. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Motion carries.